Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar is on his way.
Okay.
Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Dibala.
I'm present.
Okay, Councilmember Kostik.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe. Councilmember Circe.
Here. I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilmember Kovar should be joining us in just a moment.
Awesome, terrific. All right, well, welcome, everyone, to our Budget Work Session. Tonight is our reconciliation list, our final evening on reconciliation. Basically, just to give a recap, what is our reconciliation list and what is our objective this evening? As we know, we've been discussing the budget for the last five or six weeks. It was, the proposed budget was presented to us by the city manager on April 6th. As we've discussed, the budget was pretty much done and prepared before the COVID-19 public health crisis. As we've been going through the budget over the last few weeks, we've been discussing ways in which we want to amend the proposed budget to address the current crisis before us, as well as look at how best we can create a budget that is flexible and will allow us to adjust to and react to the changing climate as we learn more information in the weeks and months ahead. The question has come up about whether or not we are able to delay votes on our tax rate in our budget until more information is known. Right now, our, what we need to do each year is actually get our tax rate to the county. This year, it is due on May 21st. And so, we have our first vote on our budget on May 13th and the second on May 20th. So, we don't really have much wiggle room. In addition, by state law, we must have a budget in place in June so that when the new fiscal year starts, July 1st, we're ready to go. So, we will be continuing our discussions of the budget and have our two voting sessions on May 13th and May 20th. So, the reconciliation list that we're discussing tonight, if you'd like to follow along at home, it may be a little bit easier to see. If you're on your computer, you can go to the city website, go to the agenda page and click on the Excel spreadsheet to download the reconciliation list. The reconciliation list contains changes to the proposed budget that we'd like to see made. They can be additions to the budget that we want to see, as well as things that we want to take out of the budget this year. As we go through this, we will be looking carefully at what our tax rate will be, because this is what will help us determine the tax rate. In addition, we'll be looking at what our reserves are as we're going through the evening. And so, I think our deputy city manager is going to share her screen so that people can follow along with the discussion. And the first thing we want to do before we kick it off this evening is, first, I wanted to ask if anybody on the council would like to make any opening remarks or anything before we dive into the list. You can raise your hands or just wave at me. Okay, I'm not seeing any, but we can always pause and step back if folks want to do that. I just want to acknowledge all the work the city staff have been doing on the budget, answering questions and other things. And I'm looking forward to getting our discussion started. So, the first thing we're going to do is kick off, and actually, before we get to the FY 2021 budget, we're going to discuss the funds that are left in our FY 2020 budget, the one we are currently in. There are some funds that are in the budget that the city manager will discuss in a moment. And the decision point in front of us is whether or not we want to keep those monies in the current year and spend them, or if we want to carry them forward into our next budget. This evening, we don't have to decide how we may want to spend those funds. We can decide that at another time. The question before us is, do we keep this money in the current year's budget or move it forward? At this time, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. The, one of the things that we do in preparing the proposed budget for the coming year is have estimates about what the final tally will be of our current year FY 20 accounts. And obviously, there were quite a few changes with the pandemic starting. So, there are rec programs that are not occurring. There are conferences we're not going to. There's revenue we're not receiving. What that netted out to be was about $171,000, almost $172,000 in, in revenue that was saved that could be carried over to the FY 21 budget, but it's kind of leftover funds, as well as $22,500 that was identified as potentially property tax credit funds if there were a program that were developed. Altogether, it's a little over $194,000. The, there's also some, you know, there's the housing reserve and other reserves that are in play in the current year. The council may choose to carry some funds over to FY 21 or simply make a decision that they want to spend money in this current year. And it's true, you don't need to make that decision if you want to spend the money in this current year. That doesn't have to happen tonight. But what, if there is a decision that you don't want to, then that money goes into the revenue numbers for, on the FY 21 spreadsheet. So, I'm leaving it open for that discussion, but those are the funds that are, that we project are going to be available at the end of FY 20 on June 30.
Thank you very much. So, is there anyone who would like to put forward? I see Councilwoman Kostik has her hand up.
Sorry, thank you, I'm having technological problems today. All right, thank you, yes. First of all, yes, I was, actually, aside from my technological problems, was going to say also, thank you to all of the staff for the work that you've done on putting the budget together and answering all of our questions throughout this process. I know it's been more difficult and there's a lot more uncertainty and a lot more crunch while trying to deal with a lot of other issues at the same time this year. So, I really appreciate that. And I appreciate the work that all of my colleagues on the council have been doing and the important discussions we've had and everyone's emphasis on making sure that we do what's best for the city and do what's best for residents. And then, of course, I really want to thank residents as well for all of their input and the really robust discussions, I think, we've had and robust input from residents this year in particular through the comment center meetings, as well as through personal emails, you know, virtual office hours that a number of us have had. The budget questionnaire I put out over the weekend was open for two days and I got more than 100 responses, which was fantastic and really, really useful to me. So, thank you to everyone who's been sending in information and sharing your thoughts on this. With regard to the funds, the 171 and the, the 22.5, I wasn't 100% clear in the information that Jessica just sent to us this evening about the housing and economic development numbers that were estimated by our managers, whether that was spread across the two fiscal years or that was projected for FY 21. Were those assuming that, that, was that the total need or was that assuming that the 171 or a portion of that was being spent in this year and that was additional need?
I believe that was for FY 21. I think it was just identifying those funds, but obviously, there's need right now. And so, I don't know that all of those funds actually could be spent by the end of June. That's, I think, one of the things that has been suggested has been that over the next several weeks, that staff identify, you know, kind of a plan for how we go through addressing the need that we're learning more and more about. And so, I don't have all of that in front of us, but that was, I think, the estimate for FY 21. And, and I think it could be moved up faster. So, I think part of that could be used in FY 20.
Thank you, yeah, it makes sense to me, I think, to, to make those funds available for use during this fiscal year. So, I don't want to, right now, say we're going to roll those into FY 21. But if, as we're going through the process, if it seems like there are funds that would be better used for the future, I certainly don't want there to be a sense that we need to spend them now if there are upcoming needs that we're identifying for the coming year. So, I would support going ahead and using those funds in this fiscal year and allowing the flexibility to roll the remainder over and use for a similar purpose in the coming year. With regard to the, the $22,000 for tax assistance, that's something that I would like to see added. And I know that's one of our, on our reconciliation list. There's a proposal to add some funds to the tax assistance for the coming year. I do support the assistance level being raised for FY 21. I think, in, just in terms of making funds available at this point in time, it probably makes sense to keep those within the current, allow those to be used within the current budget, but I would ultimately like some of those to be used, whether it's coming from that pot or a different pot, to be used for that purpose in the coming year, as well as, you know, to be flexible in terms of use for immediate needs.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that if funds are left over and not used during the current year, then they go into the unassigned reserve. And then, you can make a decision after that about if they go somewhere else to a budget amendment.
Yeah, thank you. I think if I am remembering correctly that we have a line item on the, on the reconciliation list that would propose moving some additional funds into tax assistance. So, that would be fun, you know, a proposal for the coming year. And whether that comes out of the rolled over funds or additional funds, I don't, to me, is not relevant, just as long as we have that in there. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Dibala and then Kovar.
Thank you. And I'd like to echo first, Councilwoman Kostik's thank yous to staff and also to all the residents in my ward, plus the folks that came out tonight and last Wednesday that made comments about the budget, about the different budget years, the revenue, the possible revenues, the reserves, the, all the different pieces of this. There are a lot of different pieces that we've been thinking about. In a typical year, it's the budget. This year, it's, we're thinking about three years. As you've seen, we're starting tonight with this year, before we even get to the proposed budget for this coming year. And in the spirit of the letter that many of us signed over the weekend that says that we want to prioritize the needs of residents and small businesses and our frontline staff, I think it makes sense to use the money that has been identified so far in this fiscal year for the expenses that we need to meet. As for the property tax funds that we stuck aside for this year that we're clearly not going to use for property tax credits in this fiscal year, I agree with Councilmember Kostik on both counts that let's use the funds that we have now for the needs that we have now and let's make sure that we keep that as part of a housing economic development slash assistance plan that's going to get developed for us to react to in the next few weeks. Have that be one of the things that we consider for this coming year. I very much like the idea of strategizing a bit before we go, getting ahead to fiscal 21 for a moment, before we start putting money in lots of smaller pots right now. And so, I would, as part of our fiscal, our activities for this fiscal year, I would appreciate very much a little pause on that to hear, to hear more thoughts from staff to be more thoughtful about how we allocate the funds that we are able to free up for next year. And as, I also hear what, what the city manager is saying, if there are other funds from this year that are not spent, at that point, we can decide if we, if we need some of them for emergency assistance in the coming year. Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. I believe I'm unmuted. Thanks for the, for calling on me, I appreciate it. Thanks to everybody for their contributions to the background discussions. I think I have a slightly different perspective on part of what we're talking about. I do think that the 171 plus, plus the 22.50, which gets up to about 195, should be used now or in the period between now and the start of the fiscal year on July 1st. And my perspective on it is that there are needs now and certainly, we can do more through the fiscal 21 budget to assist residents and small businesses and others who are struggling here in the city because of the pandemic. But I'd like to have us set in motion sooner than that, some assistance that we might be able to provide. And I mentioned this previously, but I'd like to have us provide 195 out of FY 20 funds potentially for assistance to small businesses and then 200,000 out of the housing reserves for housing related. And if you take those two together, it's a little under 400,000. And interestingly, the initial estimate that we got from staff for fiscal 21 was something like 365,000 for those two. Now, the numbers don't match up exactly the same, but the total is pretty similar. So, to me, yes, definitely make the FY 20 funds available now. Like I said, I propose that we, I would propose that we also take 200,000 out of the housing reserves, since that fund is their product to help people remain in their homes. And then, to me, if there's additional proposals on the reconciliation list to increase spending next year, to me, that's the purpose of the funds we're putting on hold. And to me, if we make some shifts and put a certain amount of money on hold, that those additional funds for housing and small business would come out of that next year. So, that's a long answer to that. I think, yes, definitely, the FY 20 fund should be made available now.
Great, Councilwoman Circe.
Hello, everyone. So, I just want to say that first, I agree that we should try to spend the FY 20 dollars this fiscal year. I recognize that there may be some hardships in terms of reallocating those funds, given the short amount of time that we would need to kind of get them out the door, because we don't have that much time left in the fiscal year. But I want to encourage staff, and I'm sure they're going to do this. Given that we continue to learn more about what expenses may be reimbursable, I think one of the things that we should also make sure that we do is we try to explore ways to, to spend the FY 20 dollars related to COVID-related work is not only prioritizing the areas that we think are important, but also, as we start to learn more about the things that the county or the state may reimburse, that we try to target those dollars to spend on those things that we are already planning to do, but we would be more likely to get reimbursed for. So, I think that will also be important, like as staff are having conversations with the state, having conversations with the county about different resources that may become available, that we keep these FY 20 dollars available to spend immediately to be able to demonstrate, not only to meet the needs of the city, but to also demonstrate to the county and others that we are providing services on the ground here that are related to COVID and we should be compensated for that. So, again, I just want to reiterate that, support spending the FY 20 dollars in FY 20.
Great, thank you. And I'll just add, echo what has been said by my colleagues. And I also think, where Councilwoman Circe was going, we know there's a need right now. And if we, and I think if we want to be reimbursed for some things, we need to get some dollars, additional dollars out the door to help people. I know, you know, and just talking to our city staff almost on a daily basis on what some of our families are facing in dealing with this COVID crisis, the, the need is huge right now. And so, I would favor moving forward with keeping those funds in this year's budget. So, because we are on, we're virtual, we can't really do hand votes for each. So, it's going to be a little bit more cumbersome than normal tonight. So, I'm just going to ask the clerk to kind of call out names and people can say yea or nay in whether or not they support keeping these funds in the current year's budget.
Okay, Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostik.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe. Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Okay, now, let's go to our spreadsheet. And the first items on the spreadsheet, people will notice, we're in the pinkish box now. And we're looking at the first few lines in personnel savings. And I'm going to turn it over to the city manager to discuss, probably, what I'm looking at is lines 13 through 18.
Mayor.
Or 17.
I don't see the screen, I'm sorry.
Just, just a moment.
Jesse's got to enable my share.
It's coming, sorry.
Mayor, could I ask a question before we get that?
Yeah.
When would be the appropriate time to consider and vote on the use of the housing reserve funds?
As I've stated before, we're, we're going, as I mentioned, we're going down the list and we, the housing reserve funds are already funds allocated. Tonight, we do not have to make a decision on how we use those funds because that does not impact our tax rate or our budget. The funds are there. How we decide we want to use those funds is for a discussion for another day. So, you can talk, I mean, that may impact your decision on how you vote on one of the items on the reconciliation list, but we are not voting tonight on how we're using the housing reserve funds.
Okay.
All right.
Is that working?
Yeah.
Yes. So, if you go up to the top. There we go. So, what this shows is the general fund revenues that was, that were proposed in the proposed budget of $26,974,294. My estimate on what the net loss will be from COVID impacts to revenue is 389,150. I took into consideration quite a long list of various sources, hotel, motel, parking, variety of the loss of rec, recreation department programs, offset by some savings in personnel costs, to net the 389,150, which I, I do feel pretty good about. Obviously, we will be watching that over the course of the, over the course of the year. And so, I, so what that does is it leaves a revenue number of 26,585,144. And that makes a difference in terms of if the, if the goal is, say, to keep the same tax rate at 53.97, what the expenditure savings need to be. And I, I can't see that right at this moment, but I think it's 700-somethings, thousand. So, those are the kinds of, those numbers will change as you go through the reconciliation list in terms of where we come out to savings. But at this point, we're in the whole 3, 389,150. So, I think, Mayor, it's, it's up to you to start going, walking through the expenditure list. Do you want me to talk about the ones that have my name on it?
Yeah, so I thought we could start with lines 13, 14, 15, and 16. 16, and I guess 17, even though that has Councilwoman Circe's name by it. But all those lists are regarding personnel. So, if you want to, we could take those as a look.
That's right. So, I went through, identified the vacancies that we have right now versus what had been in the proposed budget, as well as the number of interns that had been included in the proposed budget. There are a number of vacancies that are not likely to be filled or are not likely to be filled till halfway through the year. There's also a number of interns that I think are... interns that I think are not necessary, or given the, the change in the COVID response and what our responsibilities are. We also looked at reduction in overtime costs for not being able to go to court, not having major events. And so the, the total of the estimates that I came up with are there, which I'm not adding in my head real quick. But in any event, those are the, I guess, 560. Is that right? 460. In any event. Okay, thank you. So those are the, so those are the items that I felt comfortable in saying are not able to take place and don't change the kinds of services that the council wishes to see or are likely to have, given our changed reality in, in a pandemic. So that's my contribution, I guess, to savings, knowing what really is, is not realistic to, to move forward.
Okay. Great. Does anyone have any questions on those? Councilwoman Circe, and then Dibala? I see your hands up. All right. Was that from before, Councilwoman Circe, or did you have?
Well, it was from before, but I do have a question about.
Okay.
All right. So I want to make sure that I understand what's happening. So it looks like there's, what you're proposing is, so there's a, a hold in interns at 50K, and then there's a cut to the interns at 80, 80K. So I, what I'm trying to understand is, or maybe I don't need to understand. I think I, my comments in terms of additional reduction in personnel costs, and this reduction in event support over time due to festival cancellations, I think that's something that's also still for me, a little, just trying to make sure that I'm accounting for everything. That whole total amount, I guess I'm trying to figure out, your whole total is 460, right?
464, yeah.
Yeah. Wait, huh?
In terms of all of the personnel reductions that you think you can make?
Yeah.
Right. And then there's also the 40,000 for conferences. It's underneath that, that's underneath the 118. Yeah. So 504, I guess. And so basically identified those that have, I mean, there's some, there's some positions that are vacant, that are for customer service kind of, you know, recreation staff supervisor, and we're not providing those services right now. So I took about half of a year of that, understanding that it's likely to take a while before we're into those services. I didn't cut the entire amount, because if we go into having to do some kind of, you know, reopening situation, then it's more important to have the kind of, some, a senior level staff person there coordinating childcare services under COVID than it is for part-time staff and that kind of thing. So that's why I put a half a year for that. I also had other item, other staff that I felt were not likely to be able to easily bring on board for a half a year. I put, I cut those funds for that half a year. There are some items that I'm not sure if we're going to move forward with or not. Part of it is to watch. So those were hold, kind of as a recommendation of a hold list. And then there's a, there's a number of staff, not a lot, but a few staff that I feel are important to hire, even during the COVID-19 crisis, including the position, the deputy public works director position, the IT specialist position, the urban forest manager position. Those are positions that will be needed, no matter our situation, and are important for a number of management goals and council goals to move forward for the security of the city. So that's why I have this breakout of those that I've kept some, those that I've said I don't see happening, and then those that I put on a hold list.
So I, I will say, one of my initial thoughts was that we could, and this is before, you know, it's kind of hard when we're dealing with the reconciliation, because you're, you're adding stuff, I'm adding stuff, and what you see here in terms of this 118 is, is the difference, I think, between some initial numbers and what was initially asked. I guess my main question in terms of all these little things that I have here is, is it possible to cut our personnel costs, or to find a way to cut personnel costs by $518,000? And I'm, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty details of how, how it's figured, but it seems like what you've calculated and what I initially had in terms of why I'm adding that 118, seems like we're about $54,000 away from where I kind of want it to be. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, whether or not, because again, I didn't, I, I didn't want to get into all of the nitty-gritty details of how it would be done, but simply what I want it to see. So I guess the main question in terms of, you know, for me, and that, that reconciliation is whether or not my item of 118 could be reduced to 54, and we'd still be able to accomplish some of the stuff that, that you're proposing.
Councilmember Circe, for, for 50,000, I mean, to me, that's something that's doable. There's, we've got a lot of discussions that will have to take place as we, as we balance things. I get a little bit nervous if it gets over that.
Yeah.
I did my best, I did my best shot at making a, a reasonable cut that allows still for some flexibility if the COVID demands change. So I, I don't want to really tie my feet too much, and I mean, all of our feet, because we'll be having council discussions about all of this. But I, you know, there's, there's enough that 50,000 is something that's probably swallowable. You know, I just, I do get nervous when it gets more than that, because I really did go through each and every position, and then look really carefully about the needs of the different units. The areas that I think are still really questionable are, are what happens with rec staff. And, and that's, it's just one that I don't have the answer to.
Okay. So in terms of, and I want to make sure that, that I am thinking about this correctly. And Mayor, you correct me if I'm messing up the process.
You go.
All right. So you could put me down as supporting, I don't know if you need that or not. I don't know how this is going to work. This is my third time, I still have yet to figure this out. But all of the city managers' proposed reductions, and I just want to confirm one more time, that this, this 4,080, that was the DPW and the, and the rec.
Yep, yep, yep. Because the recreation had already done its, had already scrubbed its numbers before. So that's part of, yeah.
And I may have a dupe somewhere later in the, in the document, and I'm not 100% sure. So you could put me down as, as being okay with, with all of the city managers. And then I will, I, I'm assuming we would have to vote on it. But if I could reduce this proposal of the 118 down to 50.
To 50, okay. We can make that change.
Yeah. And then that way, the sum of, of all of this will be around where, where I want it to be.
Okay. Great. I'm just going to jump in and echo my support for that position for the changes the city manager is proposing, and the additional 50,000 that Councilwoman Circe has added. And I just want to, I say, I really appreciate the, the work that the city staff did, the going back and looking at these positions. I know, as we said, things, things are changing daily, particularly with what the, and understanding what the needs are going to be moving forward. So I, I appreciate the, the deep cuts that were made here, that also still provide us with some flexibility to address things as we move forward. I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Dibala.
Thank you. Thank you. I think I am not muted. Is that correct?
You're correct. You are not muted.
We hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So I would like to just ask one, one clarifying question about the numbers in the green box, and to say that, and to say something about personal savings in general right now. In the green box, there, that 389,000, I just, for everyone's clarification, that includes your, the city manager's estimates of the revenue categories that you feel you can actually make an estimate on right now. So that does include, am I correct, some adjustments for some of the revenue numbers, but.
Right. So the, so the 389, yeah, the 389,150 includes foregone rec department revenue through December. And then it has significant cuts in admission and amusement revenue, hotel motel tax revenue, parking revenue, a small amount of highway user revenue, and other revenue from a variety of smaller categories. And then it's offset with some of the personnel savings from recreation.
Okay. And, and you've explained before why you don't have detailed estimates for fiscal 21 and 22 for some of the bigger categories of revenue.
Right. I mean, yes, I, I go through the list of the, of how much, you know, we get in, in the various categories. And I took fairly significant cuts from that, what, in what I thought made sense, based on the timing of what we're facing with COVID.
Yeah. And there are a lot of unknowns in some of the bigger numbers. So I understand, I understand that.
Yeah. All of these, all of these numbers are on the small side.
Yeah.
Because these are, these are areas that are not our major revenue sources for city government. Frankly, the largest component is recreation department class revenue, out of all that list.
Okay. So to the, to the personnel savings, which are, if I understand correctly, largely about vacancies and overtime and other personnel-related expenses that we cannot use in your judgment because of what, because things can't take place, and it wouldn't be useful. Okay. So it, I would like to just point out for, for the rest of the council, and for the, if there is a listen on, listening audience, that on this page two, the, the so-called hold list, is a category for personnel-related costs that are related to existing staff. And there, there's a lot of personnel-related costs associated besides wages and salaries. I just want to point out that that is there. We don't have to talk about it now. And I am in agreement that we should do both what the city manager and with, and what Council member Circe proposed in this set of categories. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kostik.
Thank you. I am also supportive of the reductions here that have been proposed by the city manager, as well as by Councilmember Circe. My question is partially process and partially clarification. With regard to the personnel savings on hold on permanent vacancies and hold on interns, those are also on the hold list as well. Is that accurate? And that is not a, that's the same personnel savings on both lists, not additional hold on the hold list?
I'm not, I am not certain what all is on the hold, on where the, no, I guess, yes, it is. It has my number, my name on it. Jessica put it on there. So cool. Yes. The answer's yes.
Okay. You had two separate amounts, Suzy, so that's.
Right.
There's no overlap. So this is 270 for the cut.
Right.
Actual reduction, and two, another 270 for the hold.
That's correct.
Okay. That, that's how I was reading it originally, but I started to worry that maybe that wasn't accurate. All right. Thank you. And then I assume that after we go through the process of doing the reconciliation list, we'll then discuss the hold list. Is that right?
Yes. So basically, I shouldn't mention this. So what I was thinking was that we would go through this list, and then if there were some other things people didn't feel like they wanted to cut from the budget, but hold, we'd add it to the hold list, and then we'd go through the hold list. The inverse of that is, if there's something that a majority of the council would like to cut, that somebody else put on the hold list, but it gets cut before we get to the hold list, it gets taken off the hold list, if that makes sense.
Makes sense. Thank you.
And just to clarify, the hold list is essentially funds that are not going to get spent. And we're going to revisit this in a, you know, in a couple of different meetings. And then we, the council will, will revisit this in the next fiscal year, every couple, three months, and take essentially another look at the entire budget, including revenue projections, that we, that we can't have a solid number for right now.
That's right.
So that's my interpretation. So it's essentially putting it into unassigned reserves, but tagging it for a category where it had started in the proposed budget. So it's, it's very, to me, it's very much a not spend list for now.
That's right.
As opposed to a tacit permission to go ahead, maybe. So.
Right. So anything that, any.
I wanted to make sure everybody's working with the same concept. That's all.
Right. That's, that's correct.
And the, and the other thing we can do is, as we stated last week, is we, when we have our ordinance for the budget, we can actually specify this lit, the hold list, and what we plan on revisiting in future quarters. So it can be spelled out, because we have an election coming up in November, and we may not be the council that is revisiting this budget in the future. So we want to make sure that our intent for what we had hoped to put in, what we put on the hold list and wanted to revisit, then gets clearly instructed to the next council.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I just wanted to get that out for everyone to hear. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Siemens, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to take a minute to thank city manager for pulling together these savings. But I especially want to thank Councilmember Circe for her work on coming up with these additional savings. I think this gets us off to a good start, and we're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kovar?
Just two quick things. I support the cuts. I think they totaled 510,000 plus the 4,080. I would just point out that both the 270 and the 50 appear both here and as well on the hold, but they're not overlaps. They're two separate items, because when the city manager had proposed initially, there was 270 to be cut, and 270 to be on hold. And the same was with the interns 50 to be cut, and 50 to be held, just in case that was unclear to anybody.
Great. Thank you. And just to be clear, when I add up all these line items, it comes up to 554,080. So that is what we are proposing for a cut in personnel, moving into our FY2020 budget. Will the, oh.
That seems, that seems off.
Does it? Let's see. Councilman Kostik, did you want to talk?
No, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, maybe.
It's 514, doesn't it? Or we, do we add in the, the training also?
Yep, the training in there. Yep. The training in there. It's.
Then you're right. Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's not me, it's Excel, because all I did was put them in a column and sum them up. So, all right, great. So can I ask the city clerk, just to make sure we get this on the record, what we're looking at on our reconciliation list is all of the personnel savings, reduction in overtime, and reduction in staff conferences and training, and including additional reduction in personnel. So this is line 13 through 19 on our reconciliation list.
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember, I see your.
That would be an I.
All right. Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Kostik.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Yes.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
That's everyone.
Great. Terrific. All right. Now we move down, and the next items have to do with the city council. We did get an excellent report from the, our compensation, council compensation task force, though I think a number of us think that while we want to revisit that and probably, and look at the updated principles they provided us, that this is possible, probably not the year to significantly increase council compensation. So we have on our reconciliation list to cut what was in the proposed budget, an increase in council wages, as well as an increase in council, the fringe benefits. And the, the third line of this grouping is council conferences. Just to speak to the, the fringe benefits, we did speak about a few weeks ago to have our HR director come speak to us about, more in depth about the fringe benefits and what might be possible in the future, as we're looking at all these things. But right now on the table is wages, fringe, and council conferences cuts. Anyone have any comments or thoughts on that? See, councilmember Siemens, is that an old hand or a new hand?
I'm sorry, whichever it is, I'd like to speak.
All right. You can speak.
I, I support this cut.
Great.
I think this is not the year for us to be looking for a raise or increase in benefits.
Okay. Councilmember Kovar.
Just a clarification question. And I had thought that the, well, I guess I don't know, does, does the fringe or the compensation also include the cost of living adjustment?
No, my understanding, and I'll let the city manager speak, that this, this doesn't cut into any, this is just what was suggested as an add, a potential add. But what is in, well, if we take this out, what we would stay in the budget is basically what we're, what we receive now.
My, I think that there's like a slight increase, just because you have the code language that talks about the small, the, I think.
Oh, yeah.
ECI increase, but it's a very small amount.
But does that happen automatically, or is that subject to our budget here?
You can change it, but it is something that it's an ordinance. So perhaps the city clerk has the better answer to that, or our HR director.
It happens automatically, but I, it happens, it is in the code. That increase is currently in the code. So you would need to suspend that somehow if you did not want that ECI increase.
Well, maybe we could, I, I support the other cuts. Maybe we could just get what that number is so that we would understand that before we take our final votes later in the month.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great. And I do think that was in one of the things that the W C manager provided us. If I can find it while we're talking, I'll, I'll put it in chat for everybody. Let's see. Councilwoman Circe.
I just want to say that I support these cuts. I think it's really important for the council to set the example. It's not fair for us to talk about cutting staff costs and we're not willing to do that for ourselves. So I fully support, support this. I will say, though, I want to continue to stress the importance for this council, once we've kind of dusted off all of the, the drama of the budget, and hopefully a little past some of the drama with COVID, to start thinking of ways to solidify our intent around implementing the council compensation's recommendations. I think it is important, given that we have an election coming up, for this council to really try to solidify that although we're not able to fund these recommendations this year, we think it is important for future councils to really take steps to implement the recommendations that have been outlined. So I do just want to take a moment to stress that.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Kostik, and then Dibala.
Thank you. I want to echo what my colleagues have said. I support making these cuts right now because I think it, it makes sense, given our current situation. But I really appreciated all the work that the council compensation committee did. And I think they gave us a lot of really important things to think about. And we're moving in the right direction. And I think I'd like to see us, as councilmember Circe said, make sure that we continue that momentum and that we explore some of the recommendations they made, as well as explore some of the things we discussed at our last meeting with them, related to not just monetary barriers, but additional barriers as well, to improving the equity and representation on the council. I do also just want to clarify, I believe it would be, if we, this, I believe this is only an adjustment for the amount that was the, taking into consideration the cost of living increase. It would be 78.5 if it were coming straight from the current number, if that makes sense. I just did the math from the, the proposed was 162K, and our current wages are 83.5. So if you take the difference, that would be 78.5. And since this is less than that, that should take the cost of living into consideration.
Cool. Great. Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes, I agree with councilmembers Kostik and, and Circe in supporting the, the excellent work the council compensation committee did. And I agree with what councilmember Seaman said, that this is not the time to give ourselves a raise. But I do very much want to pick this up as soon as the budget is over, look again at the proposed principles, talk about some, explore some of the options, and make some progress on this. Thank you.
Great.
I, oh, one other thing. I am also interested in hearing, not tonight, what it, how much it would be and what it would take if we, for, for, if we were to choose to forego the cost of living for the council, recognizing that we might be speaking for people who aren't yet, or the next council isn't elected. But I would like to explore that as well.
Great. All right. Seeing no other hands. Does the clerk want to do a call around and see who supports cutting this from, these items from the budget?
Sorry. Can I clarify? I think I may have confused things. Did, Jessica, did you change it to 78.5 on the document?
Yep.
I think, is that the proposal before us? I think the proposal before us was the, the 75.
Yeah, keep it.
And five.
Okay.
Yeah, let's keep it the, and then we can go back and double check. And we can always, because if the, the cost, because the cost of living increases are in the charter, we, or in ordinance, we need, we would actually need to go back and change that. So that would be something that council would need to do in the future.
Right. Just to clarify, this is Jessie, just to clarify, so the ECI change would take effect on July 1, but any other change to council salary would take effect after the election. Just wanted to clarify that for the public and the council.
Right.
Thank you. So then for this council, that is part of the time that we're still in office. Thank you for clarifying that.
Right.
So Mayor, just to check before you call the roll, the, you're talking the 75, 995, 38, 585, and the 11,000. Is that correct?
Yes, that would add up to a cut of 125,580.
Correct. Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Dibala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostik.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
All right. Moving along, the next thing we have was the cut to the police retirement amount. I know I turned over the city manager to discuss. I know you had some conversations regarding this that you passed along to council, so.
Yes, I spoke with the city's actuary. What this item was is an amount over the recommended amount that the actuary has for the police retirement fund. The amount we put in extra for FY 20 was 50,000. So that was proposed again for FY 21. I checked with the actuary to find out, given the roiling stock market and the other issues, did it make more sense to keep the 50,000 in, or how much would it hurt not to include it? It's a relatively small amount in the, in the, in the nature of the entire account. Basically, the actuary said that he could see it being of more use to the city, not including it as an added amount onto the police retirement fund. But he did note that because we've been adding in amounts each year, that has helped bring the retirement fund to a better place. And so he, even though he could certainly understand us not doing it this year, he would like the city to consider it in future years, and to recognize that that was an important component to making our retirement account more stable.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kovar, I see your hand up. Is that a new hand or an old hand?
Old, sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens, new or old?
That's new. And I would just like to say that I, I do not support this cut. I would think it's good that we have been getting back into shape. Or I don't know if back is the right word, because we haven't shaped with the retirement fund. And I would like to keep us headed in that direction.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Seeing no other comments. Does the clerk want to call this one?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Nay.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Nay.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right. So that one gets taken out of the budget. The next is the resident survey for $80,000. This was for a survey and for focus and related costs, coming to a total of $80,000. We've discussed this before in some of our work sessions, given, I think councilwoman Circe has made this observation that we do have the census going on now. So I just want to do a plug right now for people filling out their census. Our city tends to be greatly undercounted, so it's really important that we, everyone is counted. So one, fill out your census, but we do have the census going on. And in addition, given the time we are living in and all the, everything that's happening, I think probably now is a good time to put off this and, and for at least this budget. So any other comments or thoughts on this one? Okay. Seeing no hands. Does the clerk want to call?
Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember, councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Okay. Moving down now, if people do not have any objections, I'd like to take the next five items together. That includes taking out of our budget, the amount we provide to the Independence Day celebration, Folk Festival, Monster Bash, council partnerships, specifically for play days, and commemorative signs, all of these, these different reconciliation items. You know, as we've discussed, given the phases with which we need to go through to reopen in the state of Maryland, it is likely that there will not be any large events probably through the fall. And so it seems prudent now to take these out of our budget. In addition, I would just like to say thank you particularly to the Independence Day Committee that sent us the email, you know, acknowledging the fact of when, the time we are living in and the need for these funds for other things in the city right now. So I just wanted to thank them. Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, just one question. It seems like most of these things are things that happen in the next few months. And that would certainly be true for half of the play day. And then some of the other play day activity would take place in the second half of the year potentially. So my question is, are we assuming that, or is the proposal that we just don't do any mass gathering type events through the course of the whole year? Or is it focused primarily on the early part? In which case, maybe we could just have the, have 5,000 of that go into the whole pile instead.
If you want to, if you want to hold 5,000 for play days, we, I could put that over there. I mean, I put this on the, on the list because I don't necessarily, I don't know what the future is going to hold. And I also think if we come to a time when we potentially could do a play day, you know, looking at finding $5,000 in our budget, I didn't think it was, quite frankly, worth putting a hole on it, but.
Just in recognition that we might do it, that's all.
So, and, you know, also, I think that the, there, there are a lot of things unknown and given the cuts we're, we're making. So anyway, Councilman Kostik.
I just wanted to note, I, I am supportive of making these cuts, including the commemorative signs. But I do really hope that we, in the future, can return to getting the commemorative signs that we discussed previously, that would specifically commemorate some of the African American members of our community who have contributed and some of the injustices that were done, particularly with regard to the Hefner Community Center and the way that that process happened in the past. And I, I think right now, it is, it doesn't make sense for us to spend these funds on a commemorative sign when we have really pressing needs of residents right now. But I do think it's really, really important that we do get back to that. And I want, I want to see us do that in the future.
All right. Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes, just quickly, the staffed costs associated with putting these events on is assumed to be redirected to more important needs. And there's, so there's no subtraction for the staff effort here, which if that's, I'm asking the question, and if that is true, then that makes sense to me. I just wanted to clarify.
I'm sorry, I got lost in your question.
Well, I, if you're asking, what we took out above, you'll see the little note, we've, it.
Oh, yeah. So it already is in here. It's just.
We already took out.
Thank you.
Time for festivals and other things. Yeah.
I appreciate it. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Yeah. I guess we already assumed earlier that we're really not doing these.
Yeah. And it, I gotta say, it just, it just kills me to do this, but I think it's realistic and I think it's appropriate.
Great. Okay. Is there anyone else who, before I call this vote, councilmember Kovar proposed only subtracting $5,000 for play days and putting another 5,000 in, on the hold for the play days? Is any, is there anyone else who supports that position? Councilwoman Dibala and Circe, are those old hands? Councilwoman Dibala and Cersei, are those old hands? Councilwoman Cersei?
I took my hand down.
Okay.
I, I took my hand up. So, you know, I don't support holding the extra 5K. I, I get it. I think we, I agree with the mayor, we could potentially find those resources either through partnerships with our rec staff. Keep in mind, there's going to be perhaps some delays in terms of rec programming, so when we are able to play, I can only imagine the fun things that our staff are going to have planned and want to do, because we're dealing with a more restricted time in the year in which we'll be able to engage in those activities. So, you know, I, I, again, I think it's five thousand dollars, and I, I, I don't think it's, and I think it, there's definitely overlap with rec plans, so I, I would suggest that we don't add the 5K to the hold.
Okay.
Good evening, this is Susan. I, I just want to point out that the Independence Day celebration in the budget of FY twenty-one is not thirty thousand, it's actually twenty thousand. So, we can't possibly reduce a thirty thousand with a twenty thousand budget.
Um, Susan, there's a, there's a ten thousand dollar piece that's under recreation. So that.
Yeah, so it's two different, it's two different numbers to add it together.
Oh, okay.
You're right.
Thank you, Susan, for being careful eyeing on this.
Sure, sure, because I was just double checking, thank you.
Well, and I think, Susan, your, your, your chiming in actually is a really, is an excellent point about going back to why, like, we make decisions tonight, but, but why the budget comes back to us on, for our first vote on May tenth and then, uh, May thirteenth and then a second vote? Because you have the, the big task, once we get done with this list, going back and making double-checking, triple-checking everything and making sure that all the numbers add up. So I just also want to.
Thank you.
Reinforce that, like, all of this work, so, and sometimes it does happen, it has happened in the past. Sometimes we come back and we have to revisit something, so.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so adding all of this up, if we make all of these cuts, would be eighty-three thousand dollars cut from the budget. Does the clerk want to, uh, call it?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Cersei.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, the next thing on the list is the performance software. And I know the deputy city manager sent around some information this afternoon, clarifying what this is, but I think if somebody, the city manager would, because I'm not sure if everybody had an opportunity to read that this afternoon, what, what this is, that's twenty-seven thousand for performance software.
Actually, deputy city manager, would you answer that question?
Yeah, sure. So, I believe the previous HR director had wanted to hire a consultant to evaluate our performance evaluation system, just to look for ways to improve it, and so she had budgeted for that. Our current HR director, Tracy, I don't know if you're on the line, but she sounded very supportive of that, but also thought that we could do an internal assessment as an alternative if this was cut.
Great. Does the HR director, if she's on the phone, want to say anything?
I am on, it's correct, but the deputy city manager just said it was in the previous budget for an outside consultant, so that's something that I think we had just been discussed with the unions about improving the performance management program. Definitely something that we can start with internally to see what improvements need to be made. I will say the rest of the dollars that are in that line item are for the current software, so that's why the full amount of that cannot be taken. It's just this twenty-seven thousand that was designated specifically for the consultant.
And do we have this, sorry, I'm just gonna, I'm trying to figure, do we put this on the hold list yet?
No.
No, all right. So I might.
If I, if I might, Mayor, I mean, this might make sense as a whole item, given that there'll be a number of discussions, so however you wish to look at it, it's fine.
Yeah, so I'm just, I would say, I would prefer not to necessarily cut this from the budget right now, but put it in the hold until the eternal review can be done. The reason I say that is because I was part of the conversations with the union when this was discussed a couple of years ago. And I know we've made improvements and, and worked with the union on evaluations and things, but I feel like this was a promise that was made in conversations with our union representatives, and I don't feel comfortable personally cutting this from the budget right now and would prefer putting it on a hold. I knew we, we do have a new director of HR, or you're not that new anymore, Tracy, but, you know, to, to kind of, to take an assessment, see what, what is needed in the future. So I think that's going to be my position on this. Councilwoman Cersei?
Um, I agree. Actually, I, I would propose, unless others want to keep it, to drop this item completely from the list. One of the things that I wanted to make sure of is that we are not just continuing to budget, you know, put things in the budget that we don't fully expect to implement. And I guess my question is, because this was something that was really important to me in order to ensure that we're providing our staff with timely review of their, of, of how they're performing and giving them feedback in real time. I think it's important not just for, for staff, but also for managers to be able to properly oversee the, the staff that we have. And I, I agree with the mayor, I think it's important in terms of our union negotiations to be able to solidify that we have a process for really communicating and indicating success of our staff. So, so I would be okay with actually keeping this in the budget. I know I proposed it, but I think one thing that will be really, really, really important for me is to see that this actually gets done. So if we're, if we're asking for a consultant, if we're putting out a contract for a consultant, I, I need, I know, I may not be here next year when this is probably done, but I, I need that report, that readout, and I need us to implement those recommendations this fiscal year.
Great, and I, and I'd be happy not to put it on the hold. I, I don't want to put something like a twenty-seven thousand dollar thing on the hold, so if I'm within my hold and I agree with taking it out, or taking it off the list. Councilwoman Dibala?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, again, talking about the hold list generally, point out that I had put a placeholder of a hundred and fifty thousand on the hold list for operating costs such as this and any other, to give some flexibility. So rather than go line by line and up, thumbs up ten thousand, thumbs down twenty thousand or something else, I had put this in here to, to collect, if you will, a number of these items, and also to, to give the city managers some flexibility to reduce some of the other personnel operating cost, non-personnel operating costs in the budget that are proposed. Thank you.
Okay. So if I can ask the question, is there anyone on the council who would like to keep this on the list and take the twenty-seven thousand out of the budget? Raise your hand. All right, not seeing anyone, let's take this one off the list. So, I think that was the easy stuff.
I actually, I, I was trying to raise my hand, I apologize, I would, but, but if I'm the only one, just FYI, I would prefer to, to reduce it right now. Thank you.
Oh, so you want it, you, you want to take the twenty-seven thousand off. All right, so then we'll call the vote. All right, so if the clerk will call the vote, yea is taking the twenty-seven thousand out of the budget for the performance software, nay is keeping it in the budget.
Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Dibala.
So yea is to take it out?
I think you need to be clear.
So Councilmember Kovar just voted to take the performance software out of the budget.
Thank you, and I would like to do that as well.
All right, so two.
I am kind of confused, but I would like for it to not be on this list.
Say nay then.
Nay.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Cersei.
Nay.
Mayor Stewart.
Nay. I just want to double-check with folks that, again, because nobody raised their hands before I spoke to this, that you want us not to do the performance software. So all those who voted, the four ayes, was to take this out of the budget and not move forward with the performance software. Yeah. Okay, it's out of the budget then. All right, so, and that means it's out of the budget and not on hold. So, um, let me just do this quickly, because I've taken it out. All right, so those were what I thought would be some of our easier ones. Right now, our, the total that we have reduced, the proposed budget is nine hu, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty. So that is, and if you remember, to keep the, the current rate, if you look at the line, is about seven hundred and seventy-three thousand. So that's what we've done already. Now, the next item we have is the stormwater offset, and I think this one's going to take a bit more explaining than the other items. So I'm going to turn it over to the city manager and, and possibly the head of public works to talk about this.
Thank you. So there's, there were, we've been discussing about the, the way to assess stormwater rates for two years with the council, related to the study that was done that did a more accurate count of the amount of impervious surface on properties in the city of Tacoma Park. After quite a long number of delays and delays with discussions, but just before the pandemic, we had kind of gotten close to an idea of going with a possibility of, of charging people by five hundred square feet of impervious surface at potentially a twenty-five dollar, uh, per five hundred square foot rate. However, we were never able to do the kind of public outreach and public discussion that would be appropriate for that kind of a change. There's two other options that the council can consider relatively easily. One is to keep the current system, which is a ninety-two dollar rate for all single-family properties, and then a, and continue to charge multifamily, commercial, and institutional properties by a square footage amount. What we did learn through the study that was done two years ago was that we had underestimated the average impervious surface amount on residential, single-family residential properties, such that if you use the, the more correct number, which is about a thousand square feet of impervious surface more per property on average, if you use that change, multi, you realize that multifamily, commercial, and institutional properties have been paying more than their fair share of the total budget for stormwater. So one of the other options that could be considered is to continue with the same system where we have an average amount per single-family residential property, which is called the equivalent residential unit, but with a larger square footage amount, that then would be more fair to the multifamily, commercial, and institutional properties, does not address the difference between residential properties and their square footage. However, if we use that difference, square footage rate process, we would need to raise the equivalent residential unit from ninety-two dollars to a hundred and eight forty-seven. One of the discussions that has been held is if we did do that, which would be a little more fair, there could be an offset of about fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, which would keep the ninety-two dollar rate for those single-family residential properties for this year while we continue to evaluate the right rate system. So I think that the options really in front of the council are to continue to have a, the system where we have an equivalent residential unit, and then the multifamily, commercial, and institutional properties pay on a pro-rata system by how much square footage they have of impervious surface. And then the question for the council is, do you want to use the ninety-two dollars and the old system, recognizing that, that number is, is off? Or would you rather use the one hundred and eight forty-seven, which I would, if we do, would prefer it to be a hundred and eight fifty, just because it's even, more even number, but whichever. But you end up, if you wished, you could pay out of the general fund fifty-two thousand, two fifty, which would then not affect the paying, the, the amount paid by the single-family residential property owners and keep the ninety-two dollar amount on their, that would show up on their property tax bill as a stormwater fee. So to me, it's a question about, do you want to just keep the same system? Or do you want to go to a different, to this, a little bit more fair system, but offset it with some general fund dollars, which could be any amount that you wish? But to keep it at a ninety-two dollar amount takes about fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. That's, it's kind of up to the council of which direction you want to go. We do need a decision because we need to have the rate identified for the stormwater budget amendment when you vote on it, on the thirteenth and the twentieth, and then we need to get the list of charges to the county by June fifth.
Thank you for that recap. I have Councilwoman Dibala, then Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you for that summary. That helped a lot. What I would like to do is to move toward the system that we were very close to adopting in the long run, in addition to one of the options that you've picked. And I would like to, I would very much like to not forget that part as we move forward. The, the input we were looking for, I believe we were going to send folks a letter. I understand why staff-wise that hasn't happened, completely understandable. But, but that could, that, that doesn't require us to all be in a large gathering, debating this in person in order to move forward with that system we were discussing. I don't think it's appropriate to adopt that system that, right now, because this is not the time to be moved into a, a large rate increase for lots of people. But I really don't want to forget about it. I would like to move forward with that. And I'll stop for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I think at the moment, we struggled some last year in trying to figure out how to phase in and have an appeals process and in other ways, understand how to implement a new system. I think it would be more fair to ultimately get to some sort of tiered system now that we have the additional data, but I don't think we've, honestly, to, to my way of thinking about it anyway, I don't think we really have the, the kind of real engagement with the community that we ought to if we're going to be taking on a change of this sort. And I, to me, there's an additional question, which is, if people are going to pay more, do they get something more for it? I, I would prefer just to leave it the way it is for this year, for those reasons, but also because if we, in a sense, raise or raise another fifty-two thousand dollars through our tax process to subsidize this and then spread that money around to everybody, you know, they get a slight subsidy, and then they end up paying more in taxes. I, I bet if it isn't a wash, because it will vary from person to person, in, in some cases, people will end up getting a slight reduction and paying that much more in taxes. getting a slight reduction and paying that much more in taxes anyway. So I, I just feels like it's better all around to leave it the way it is one more year and just really commit ourselves, once we get through this and both the budget process and the um, the pandemic begins to be a little more favorable for us to interact more with folks to, to then use the full next fiscal year to, to figure out what we need to do. So I would recommend just leaving it as is for now. Thank you.
Um, Councilman um, Kostik?
Uh, yes, I um, I also think that long-term, we, long-term, hopefully shorter rather than longer term, we are able to move forward with the more equitable system of having um, a single-family properties pay based on the actual amount that they have. I think uh, given a number of questions still about this process, and um, as Councilmember Kovar said, the fact that we haven't really had a lot of opportunity for public engagement, um, specifically an input on this, as well as the fact that I think it really, no matter which of the two options we were to choose, if we were to make a change now, I think it ends up being inequitable for someone, whether it's um, the multifamily buildings or the single-family properties that end up paying a hundred dollars when they should really be paying twenty-five. I think it makes sense for now to hold off and wait until we can make the proper change and do so in the coming year.
Okay, Councilman Circe?
Um, yeah, so I think I was here because of a different line item that I thought was something else. But um, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I think um, through this budgeting process, one thing that has become painfully clear, and that is um, we could do more. Uh, I'm accepting responsibility for doing more um, in terms of communicating to residents about um, what this change in fee actually is. Um, and there's a quite a bit of misinformation that's out there in terms of whether or not we're kind of giving big business a cut and charging residents more, and it's actually the other way around. So um, you know, I think it would be in our best interest to um, uh, maintain the status quo in terms of the ninety-two dollars. Um, focus on making a decision in terms of the approach that the council wants to take in terms of a tiered system versus um, a flat rate, and then make sure that we can do our due diligence in terms of issuing out letters to let folks know about the possibility of a change. Um, and then when we're at a point where we actually know what that change is, be able to effectively communicate it to folks. So I apologize, that was a long-winded way of saying, I agree with everyone else.
Great. Um, Councilmember Smith, and then Siemens.
Uh, I would just like to say that I agree with my colleagues that we shouldn't uh, put this in place right now. Uh, we were the first jurisdiction in Maryland, if I recall, that had a stormwater fee. Um, I think we owe it to our residents to uh, walk them through this new process or put, put potential uh, change in uh, our system. So I would suggest that we wait until uh, after we pass this budget and have a much longer timeline, uh, so that we can uh, explain to residents and hear their feedback on whether or not they want to go forward with um, what staff is proposing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just point of clarification, so if I vote uh, aye on this, we're saying we're going to postpone our move to a, a new system?
Correct, because that takes out the fifty thousand dollars that we were going to, that was in the proposed budget to help offset the increase, uh, potential increase in stormwater fees for some households.
All right, just wanted to make clear what the, what we were voting on. Thank you.
Yep, it got a little confusing with one. Um, but, okay, I will ask the uh,
Mayor?
Yes, sorry.
Can I ask a question before? I just want to make sure I'm understanding. This is Darryl Braithwaite, a public works director. Um, with the decision to stay with the ninety-two dollar uh, rate, um, is the council saying they want to use the current equivalent residential unit numbers and maintain the same revenue from the fee? Or are we going to transition to the corrected equivalent residential unit numbers in which we know that the result will be a, about a hundred thousand dollar less in revenue generated uh, towards the fee?
That's why you're the mayor.
My sense from what the council was saying, but someone, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they want to just keep everything the same this year, um, as.
My, my main concern with that is knowing that we know, what we know uh, from the study, that the equivalent residential unit is not what we've been using. It was the best information we had prior to the study. Uh, so it seems a bit disingenuous to continue with the equivalent residential unit that we know is a thousand square foot too little. Uh, m- my thought is that if we were to maintain the ninety-two dollar per equivalent residential unit and use the new number, uh, albeit we'd have a hundred thousand dollars or more or less in revenue, we may want to consider pulling money out of the existing stormwater fund to reach that balance. There is a, uh, there is a um, an existing balance in the stormwater fund that isn't depleted. So that could be a way that we would accomplish maintaining the rate uh, without uh, having to reduce the budget by a hundred thousand dollars and with using the current um, calculated impervious area.
Okay, so I see a couple of hands. Councilwoman Circe and then Dibala?
Um, thank you, uh, Ms. Braithwaite, I, because, because that was part of what I was a little confused about, because I thought the city manager was saying that that fifty K kind of covers um, covers that gap, but you're absolutely right. Um, I err more on the side of, we still need to make sure that we make um, we, we do our due diligence in terms of making the, the big, you know, folks that are overpaying right now um, right. So I want to make sure that I understand what we are actu- like this particular line item, because I thought that the line item of the fifty thousand dollars, and again, I apologize, I was a little confused, because it was, it was in the budget as a um, a um, a assistance tax rebate program, right? So is it that the fifty thousand dollars was originally in the budget for the purpose of providing residents who had problems paying their stormwater fees?
So it was supposed to be identified that way, and, and it wasn't written that way. But it was, it was to help pay the stormwater fee. Now, um, I, I have to say I'm a little bit confused about what Ms. Braithwaite just said. Um, but the, you know, whichever, whichever direction we go on this, I would, you know, I think her goal is to try to make sure that people aren't overpaying, at least in, in large sums. But I, I also don't want to, I also don't want to shortchange our stormwater program, because that's an important uh, important service, and it helps us meet our climate change uh, goals, and, and it helps residents that have flooding and that kind of thing.
Yeah, and Susan, Susan may be able to identify what the balance is in our stormwater fund. I think we carry a balance in that.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, what I, because I was surprised when I thought that we could keep everyone at the ninety-two thousand based on the, with the fifty thousand dollar reassign, because I, I, I thought it was higher than that. So that's why I was like, oh, yeah, great, if we can do it with fifty thousand dollars, awesome.
Yeah, I think the fifty thousand was assuming an increased rate, and so going to help to offset.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was, it was assuming the hundred and eight fifty or a hundred and eight forty-seven rate, which was what was one of the recommendations of the VEP study, Black and VEP study.
Okay, but it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be, so basically, what we're voting on is if we wanted to reallocate funds that were originally assigned to provide assistance to those in need um, of help with paying their stormwater fees, and redirecting those dollars to offset the stormwater fee increase to a flat rate of one oh eight. Otherwise, we would need to find more money to take everyone down to the ninety-two dollars. Does that make sense?
Right.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Sorry, that was a, if I can interrupt for a minute, I thought that the funds, the fifty that was in the budget were specifically in there to help reduce the um, basically reduce that one oh eight to ninety-two, so that people didn't have to pay that extra.
The fifty thousand, the, the fifty thousand that was in the proposed budget was based on the old concept of going to the five hundred square feet and just trying to help offset some of the increase that some of the folks would feel. Um, and so, so I'm, so what I am hearing now are three options. One is that we just don't do any different, and we use the old numbers for square footage, which we know are incorrect. Um, do what uh, what Ms. Braithwaite is talking about. We have a balance in the stormwater fund of about a hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Um, so use the, use the larger number of square footage, but keep the equivalent residential unit rate at ninety-two dollars and subsidize the different, the lack of, I guess, the shortfall in revenue with stormwater fund. Is that correct, Ms. Braithwaite?
Yeah, that's a, that's what I see as an option.
Well, can I add another option? Um, to, to try to make our lives a little easier, um, can we actually add to the reconciliation list a separate line item for the cost associated with keeping everyone at the ninety-two dollars? And then maybe, and I don't know if we want to put it at a hold or what, but as we get to the point where we have a better understanding of how much we've cut and where we are with the tax rate, um, then we can, we can decide on whether or not we would have enough in the savings, you know, based on the cuts that we're already talking through, to be able to fund that full one hundred thousand dollar difference. And so what we're talking about right now is whether or not, you know, and I don't, and again, I defer to the mayor on the right way to do it, but I, I think where I'm getting confused is we're kind of combining two concepts. And one is whether or not we want to continue to provide people with support on their stormwater fees, whether it's ninety-two dollars or a hundred and eight dollars or whatever. Um, and then the other is whether or not we want to have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget to pay um, to keep every household at ninety-two dollars.
So if I might be clear, though, the, the a hundred thousand dollars would be coming out of the stormwater fund, and that is not on this list. That is, this is the general fund list. And so um, so part of the question is, is what happens to the fifty thousand dollars that was in the proposed budget to help offset the, the impact? So you can put it somewhere else, but I'm just letting you know that the.
So can I just actually, just follow up on what Councilwoman Circe was saying? So if we use the, the, the larger square, am I saying this right? The larger square foot number? Um, uh, and charge people ninety-two dollars, we could roll over a hundred thousand dollars from the stormwater fee this year, be using the fairer system that's in place, but not change anyone's fee and not need to take anything out of general funds and still be able to fund the stormwater fund at the level we need to in FY twenty-one.
That's right. Now, obviously, when you take money out of the stormwater fund, you know, that's, that's for stormwater projects in the future, so we have some balance right now. But just recognize that when we're looking in the future, you know, we, we will need to be restoring that amount in future years.
Yeah, no, I get that. So, and, yeah, um, but I'm trying to think of, all right, so it, other than what, that we're taking money out of the stormwater fee, and we may need to, to put it back um, at a later time, are there any other downsides to doing it this way?
Um, I, uh, this is Susan. I just want, want to add some uh, information about the revenue on the stormwater account uh, comparing FY twenty to FY twenty-one. In FY twenty, the stormwater revenue is seven hundred and ten thousand. In FY twenty-one, it is seven hundred and five. So it doesn't sound like, look like that um, there is um, the revenue increase in FY twenty-one, because the revenue amount is actually less than FY twenty. So I just don't understand, um, you know, if, if this, i- if we're going over to the new system, the revenue we, we should receive in FY twenty-one should be much higher, a hundred thousand higher, right?
No, it's, it's, um, Susan, I'll, I'll have to talk with you offline, because it has to do with the different calculation. We, we want to, we want to maintain that seven hundred and five or seven hundred and ten thousand dollars in terms of revenue for the projects. But it's just how that information is calculated from the rate.
Yeah, and I think our expenditures currently projected for FY twenty-one are in the seven hundred thousand dollar range. I mean, we, when we bring up the stormwater budget with council, we can discuss those in more detail, and there may be ways we can compress that sum to try to achieve this kind of gap year uh, while we transition to the new system, or if we transition to a new system.
Because that would be.
Our proposal, our proposal for, for FY twenty-one is um, about seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars worth of expenditures.
Okay. So I think what's on the table, and then I'll, I, I see some hands raised, just to reiterate, is the proposal to use the fairer, more correct um, numbers. But hearing what the council is saying and why not to um, change the actual fee residents pay, keep it at ninety-two and roll over the money from um, the stormwater fee. If we did that, we would not have to use anything out of general funds to then offset any costs for people, because they're paying the same fee they paid the year before.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember Dibala, Kostik, and then Kovar.
I think that's a good idea. I, I think we need to move to the new system, show that we're making the transition, show that we in, continue to work with residents on the options for the resident, for the single-family part. And I, and I like the idea of using unspent funds from this year to balance the books as we move to the new system. Balance the books within the stormwater fund.
Great, thank you. Councilman Kostik?
I have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, the stormwater fund, is that what, would those funds typically be used for? If, if we do not do this with them, what's the anticipation that those funds would be used for in the future?
Those are dedicated funds, yeah, just for stormwater work. So if it's not allocated in the budget, it, it just sits in a reserve until it's needed.
But, you know, one of the things that we've had the um, presentations before on several times is that we have to do a lot to keep up with our state requirements for stormwater treatment. And so um, you know, we don't have a lot of excess funds there, um, and that number has gone down in the past, um, in the past year. So I, you know, I'm cautious about that reserve being used, um, that fund being used too much. Um, I think it makes sense to do it this year. It does a, adjust this within the stormwater fund, but it does put an onus, I think, on the city to move into the new system, uh, because we can't continue to, to do that. We wouldn't have funds next year to balance it with stormwater reserve.
And just so I'm understanding, I'm confused, and I know we discussed this before, but I'm confused about why it would be fifty-two thousand to offset the payment amount for single-family homes to move from ninety-two to one oh eight, but it's a hundred if we are correcting the.
The, the difference is, the difference is that the institutional, commercial, and multifamily properties would be paying um, under one system, a hundred and eight forty-seven for that square footage. Under the system where we use the stormwater funds, they'd be paying it at ninety-two dollars for that amount. And so they would be paying less money under the ninety-two dollars for their square footage than they would under the hundred and eight forty-seven. And so they would be paying less money under the ninety-two dollars for their square footage than they would under the a hundred and eight forty-seven.
So that flat rate applies to the formula that is figured on the multifamily and commercial as well. Okay, thank you. And then finally, I don't know if this is useful or not, but I thought at one point we discussed the fact that there was sort of a half-year check-in. Am I remembering that right? Where there's, there's some like half-year option in terms of billing the stormwater fee?
There's, there's two different, there's two tax bills that go out, but I don't think we're set up. At this point, it's so late in the process. Trying to figure out a way to split that into two payments, I think, would be really confusing both for residents and, and really hard for us to do as staff.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I, I think in some ways, the "solution" in quotes of using the storm, stormwater funds, it's kind of a, a loser in the sense that then it just means that everybody's paying this amount and we're not doing as much or getting as much in terms of projects that are being-
No, no, it doesn't cut the number, it doesn't cut the amount of projects.
But, but if there's less, if there's less money available for projects, there would have to be, right?
It's not less, it's, it's excess money in the fund. So it's not for the projects. There's, there's a balance in the fund of a hundred sixty-six thousand dollars.
Any money that's in the fund was raised from residents for stormwater activities. And so however you want to describe it, that means the funds are no longer being used for stormwater activities that people paid. I mean, that's just an objective-
Right, for the, for your future years. Yes, you're correct.
So any of the options that we do has a drawback. This is not a magic bullet. This is a bullet that says, you know what, all those, some of the money that you paid before is not used for anything. Right?
It would still be used for stormwater projects. So there would be no, no change in its intention. And I think it would be critical, as has others have said, that this would be seen as an interim step to get us to the right equivalent residential square footage numbers since we know we're now incorrect. So we'd move to the new assumptions about impervious area averages. But it would delay changing the fees in a way that would impact people more substantially until we had more time to discuss it. So it's kind of taking that mid-step. The, the funds in the stormwater reserve were intended for stormwater, they would be used for stormwater projects. They would just be bringing us up to the seven hundred thousand dollars that we have for identified costs in the FY twenty-one budget. The fee itself would only generate just under six hundred thousand at that ninety-two dollar rate with the new ERU.
Is the surplus there because other, in other years, it wasn't all used?
Yes, it's been, yeah, it's been carried over for probably decades at different times, you know, adding and subtracting.
You know, it's part of what you have to look at in terms of the, we had to increase the rate several years ago so that we could help meet those state requirements. But you don't want to cut it to the zero dollar. You need to have that buffer just because you, the way that the construction projects work, the different stormwater projects work.
And there may be some years where it wasn't spent or projects costed out differently. Or we were able to get a grant so we could offset some of the expenditures. So those monies weren't spent and then they ended up in the fund, always intended to be used for stormwater, but just not needed at that time.
Right, I guess my only point though is that that is money that people paid, right?
Yeah, yes.
And, you know, if the assumption is that we'd be ready to completely transition to the new system next year, I'm a little skeptical of that. I mean, this is probably better than any of the other options. But we're basically saying that money that you paid before was never really used at the time, which might make people wonder why they had to pay that amount then.
They would have to be paying more otherwise to get the projects this year. I mean, it's just one of those things where it's, you know, I'm, I'm happy to sit down with you separately and show you the history of the, of the fund.
Okay, Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like I'm at the carnival. I'm getting ready to throw the ball at the target so I can get what I want. But I'm not sure it's the same target. Are we still saying an I vote is going to reduce the budget by fifty thousand?
Yes.
All right, I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Kostic, is that an old hand?
That's a new hand. I'm sorry, I want to go back to the, the fifty thousand versus the one hundred thousand numbers. So the fifty thousand in the budget is assuming that the ERU changes for commercial and multifamily buildings as well?
Yeah, yes, the way that, the way that the rates work are that, and the way it's always been is that we identify what the average residential unit is and that equals X number of square feet. And then the actual amount of a commercial property's impervious surface is divided by that X amount of average residential things. And then the rate is times that amount. So if, if a commercial property has the same square footage as the average residential unit, then they just pay the ninety-two dollars. But they often have more. And so it's, so the question is, what, what's the dividing number times the rate?
I guess what I'm asking though is, just if you're sort of looking at this, like, straight on, just at the, at the budget here, it sort of looks like we could spend fifty thousand dollars and achieve the same things or we could spend a hundred thousand dollars and achieve the same thing. And that doesn't make- I would prefer to spend fifty thousand instead of a hundred thousand if that's an option. That's, that's just what I'm trying to think through.
The question is, how much does a commercial property person pay? Do they pay a hundred and eight forty-seven times their square footage or do they pay ninety-two dollars for their square footage?
But I also think-
And I, sorry, part of the, sorry, part of the other issue, that fifty thousand was geared only towards the single family with no assumption of paying any commercial, institutional. So it wasn't across the board because the assumption was if we implemented the new ERU, those commercial and multifamily and institutional properties would be paying less than they previously paid because the square footage number had increased by a thousand square feet. So that fifty thousand was geared only towards assisting single-family property owners to cover that gap between ninety-two and one oh eight. Or between the twenty-five dollar per five hundred square feet, knowing that there were going to be some folks that paid four hundred or four hundred and fifty dollars. So it was only geared towards the single family for the fifty thousand. The hundred thousand dollar difference that we're, we're referencing is if we use the new ERU and a ninety-two dollar rate, we're gonna generate five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars a year instead of the seven hundred and five or seven hundred and ten that we were projecting. So that's the hundred thousand dollar difference.
So the fifty thousand assumes that we're using the new ERU, but the, essentially, single-family properties pay the ninety-two dollar rate, but the multifamily and commercial pay the one oh eight rate?
No.
Within that formula?
We, we would keep that, we would have to keep the rate the same for all property types. We couldn't have one rate for single-family at ninety-two and, and one oh eight forty-seven for multifamily.
Ms. Kostic, the, the idea was that we would pay the difference between the ninety-two and the one oh eight for the single-family properties?
I think that's what I'm saying. I think, I think that's what I'm saying, it's just coming out differently. But yes, they're just, they're paying the one oh eight, but they're being reimbursed for it. Yes.
That's right.
Yeah, gotcha.
Thank you.
And so for me, the difference though is, and I think this goes back to something Councilmember Kovar said, which is if we keep the fifty thousand dollars in and re- return it to folks, the difference between the one oh eight fifty and the ninety-two, one, it's gonna like, one oh eight, my understanding is the one oh eight fifty is gonna show up on their, their tax bill and then we're sending them the difference. And that's what, and we're taking money out of the general fund versus going to the ne- new sort of this, this half step towards the new system and using money that has already been allocated for stormwater projects and we have to help us sort of bridge this transitional period. Did I get that? Are my assumptions correct there?
Yes.
Okay. So how do we vote on this? So I think the, there's, the one vote is to take, well, let's do it this way. If, if, if you agree, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on moving to the new calculation and having the fee stay at ninety-two dollars and bridging this gap with the money that we have already in the stormwater fee, that's an I vote. Okay? Will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye. Okay, so then that means that the fifty thousand dollars is taken out of the budget here.
That's correct.
We don't have to actually vote on that. All right. Awesome. All right, I think that, that was gonna be one of the tougher ones tonight. Now, the next one, we're gonna take each of these individually because I think they may have some discussion. We had in the proposed budget a tree canopy implementation plan. There was thirty thousand dollars in the budget. I don't know if city manager, the, the public works head would want to speak to this, specifically what that money was geared towards.
Braithwaite, could you address that one, please?
Sure, sure. We, we basically, given the, the tenor of the conversations with the council and the Committee on the Environment and others that we'd heard from in reference to our tree ordinance discussion, we wanted to place some money in the FY twenty-one budget to be able to respond to what we were hearing. It could have been a tree canopy implementation analysis in which we'd get consulting services to help us envision a five to ten-year plan for how we move forward with the canopy increase in terms of species, in terms of identifying locations, in terms of building programs and how we promote it. It could, so that is, was one concept. The other concept we were hearing about was a, an inventory, an actual inventory of the trees itself. So that is roughly about the cost for doing a, a tree inventory of existing right-of-way and park space. So depending on the outcome of council's discussion about these two items through the tree ordinance, we just wanted to have funding available to either do the canopy implementation plan or do a tree inventory, again, with outside consultants.
Thank you so much. Would anyone like to start off the conversation on this one? Yeah, Councilmember Kovar, Kostic and Circe?
Yeah. I think the work that we've, we've been doing on both the tree ordinance and the tree canopy and urban forest policy has all been caught up in and slowed down by the health crisis. And so I don't know exactly when we're going to be in a position either to be ready to vote on the tree ordinance. That could happen fairly soon, I suppose, because we were probably eighty percent of the way there. My colleagues who've been working on that could, could see whether they agree with me about that. I think we had some further steps to go in terms of the urban forest policy and canopy, although we were ready to talk about general principles on that and have a resolution that would embody them. So I'm, I'm just not sure we'll be ready to take this step. And so I'm a little reluctant to put the money in without really knowing where we would end up and when.
Councilman Kostic?
Yeah, I share some of Councilmember Kovar's thoughts on this. I know we've been doing a lot of work over the past year, a couple of years, on making changes to the tree ordinance, trying to develop plans for how to grow and maintain our tree canopy. And those are things I think we really need to continue and need to support. At this point in time, I feel like, as Councilmember Kovar said, we have had to delay a number of these things and we don't, I think, have a super firm concept at this point in time in terms of exact next steps. And I think, given the scenario we're in, I would be more comfortable with holding off on this item and trying to move forward with something in the future, maybe using the next year to instead continue to collaborate with our council committees, the Committee on the Environment and the Tree Commission, to develop more, a better sense of exactly where we want to go with this and working to adopt the, the changes to the tree ordinance and some of our goals for the tree canopy implementation and the, the plans overall, and then pursue this in the future.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Circe, did you want to speak? I, sorry, your hand was up before, but now down.
I just want to say ditto.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Dibala?
I feel that that this is an area that we, we want to keep moving on and that we will, in a year, be a year, be in a position to wisely use these funds for any of a number of purposes that Daryl just, yep, just outlined. So I would like to move this to the hold list rather than the, the vote on a cut.
Okay. All right. So I would say I'd support moving it to a hold list. I also support keeping it in the budget. My concern with taking it out and knowing what we did before to the personnel budget and the demands that we had this last year on our urban forest manager and the devastation that hit our oak trees this year, I'm very leery to take this out completely of the budget. We may need to potentially repurpose what we were thinking about a tree canopy implementation plan. But what we are seeing is, and what we saw with the oaks this past year is, you know, is just devastating to our tree canopy and what's happening. And I just think that there is probably, it may not be in the first quarter, but it may be in the second or third quarter. We might be able to do, put in place more things to really invest in our tree canopy. I, I think it would be short-sighted of us to completely take this money out of the budget right now, knowing what we just did to the personnel cost as well. And so I, I don't think we can anticipate then moving in any positive direction on tree canopy work for a year if we don't have some money in here that we can look at at some other time. So I would support, if people don't support just keeping in the budget, then moving it to a hold.
I would like to amend what I said. You said it better than I did. I agree with what you, what you said. If, if, to, if, if it does not stay in the budget, I would prefer to keep it in the budget now. But if it does not stay, people vote against it, I would like to put in the hold.
Okay, great. Councilman Kostic?
Yeah, one of the things that we have talked about previously was using some of the balance of the tree fund, which I believe is about a hundred thousand dollars for some other purposes. And I know we discussed the possibility of being able to potentially do that later in the year. I'm wondering, is that something we could potentially look into and, and see about utilizing some funds from there? Maybe not thirty thousand, but a smaller number to potentially do some tree canopy implementation work?
Suzy, did you want me to respond to that?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead? I mean, I, the, the question is really the purpose of the tree fund, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think if we were geared towards, you know, a planting plan and an intention towards increasing canopy, then I think we could make the case that those funds in the tree fund were, were being responsibly spent. But it really is a, you know, kind of a council policy decision in that regard.
So I, my preference would be here and I'd like to propose that we cut this from the general fund and we utilize fifteen thousand from the-
utilize fifteen thousand from the tree fund for tree canopy implementation.
And I just, I'll just reiterate, like, I mean, the demand this year was just so great in terms of people wanting education, help, more tree maintenance and everything else that I just am very, I just, if we take this out of the budget or if we just put fifteen thousand towards it, towards something else, I just really want all of us to remember this conversation in a few months, because we will not have the staff to address the demand that people have for us to do work on trees. And I just wanna underscore, I do not think it's fair to cut our personnel costs as much as we did, not invest money in here, and then six or eight months from now, and it may be a completely different council, to expect our staff to be able to do work that they just don't have the capacity to do. So, councilmember Smith?
I would support putting this on the hold list. I think, Mayor, you made some strong arguments about potentially using this coming next year. So I would support that proposal.
Councilmember Siemens?
I support putting it on the hold list.
Okay, Councilman Dibala?
I would like to say that even in the midst of this difficult time, I'm still getting resident questions about education and outreach and tree canopy and the kinds of things that this money could be used for. And I don't think we will be waiting a year to get through the tree ordinance and tree, the big tree policies, decision. So I think we need in some form to do this. I I also support the using money from the tree fund for the things we can do it for, use it for, and not having it roll over year after year. But that, I believe, as Daryl said, this is a separate conversation. What can we use the tree fund money for? So I still would like to have this money in the budget. Thank you.
Yes, I think we can come back. If it does get cut, or even if it stays in, we could always come back to the tree fund and either put more money or put some money. All right, how did we take a vote on this one? Let's see. Oh. So the options on the table are to completely cut the thirty thousand dollars for the tree canopy implementation plan from the budget or keep it or put it to a hold. So just let's try this. If the clerk will call it, say what your top preference is. Cut, keep, or hold?
Councilmember Kovar, cut, keep, or hold?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the options. Would you mind repeating that?
Cut it completely from the budget, the thirty thousand dollars for the tree canopy implementation plan. Keep it in the budget or put it on the hold list.
Well, and I'm sorry to ask this, but is the idea of using the tree fund not part of any of these three options?
Well, because, no, because we could, you, that, we could do that later on. Like, that doesn't impact our budget because the money's there. It's like the housing reserve fund. So if you wanna say I wanna use the tree fund for this, that's a conversation the council has to have because we actually have to pass is it an ordinance to enable us to do that because of what the tree fund is allocated for right now? So that's not a discussion we want right now.
I'd say cut and use the tree fund then.
Okay.
Councilmember Dibala?
Keep. And my number two vote is hold. In this spirit.
Not great choice voting. Councilmember Kostic?
Cut and use the tree fund.
Councilmember Siemens?
I'm glad, Mayor, you said these things are getting easier. I'll say hold.
Councilmember Smith?
Hold.
Councilmember Circe?
Hold.
Mayor Stewart?
No, just to make it easier, I'll say hold. So let's put it on the hold list. All right, so is the deputy city manager input on the hold list? And I just wanna go back to the deputy city manager. I think we somehow lost the stormwater fee, the fifty thousand dollars, the taking out the fifty thousand was actually supposed to stay on the list.
Okay.
So we gotta put that one back in.
Okay.
I'm sorry, say again why it goes back on the list?
Because we voted, did I, we voted on the stormwater to move towards using
A stormwater fund.
The stormwater fund to close the gap as we have this transitional year and not to reimburse people for going to the one oh eight fifty.
I told you that target kept moving.
I did. But I promised you it was minus fifty on the budget, so we gotta keep it in. All right, so then, so tree canopy, we take out this thirty here and it gets put in the hold category. So then just so we're all clear, what the hold category means is that the money is still left in the budget. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah.
I missed or didn't understand what you said about the stormwater. I thought we voted to remove the fifty thousand from the budget.
Right, so it stays on the reconciliation list.
Okay, so she just needs to put voted next.
Yeah, the deputy city manager had just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm keeping my tally here. So we're up to nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-six that we have cut from the budget. Okay, so tree canopy implementation is on hold, but the money stays in the budget. Next is the sustainability outreach and events. At the moment, fifty thousand dollars is in the budget for this item. There is a proposal to cut the budget by thirty thousand, leaving twenty thousand dollars in the budget. And does the director of public works wanna speak to this one again? I know there was a bunch of questions about what what this money covers and what would stay in the budget.
Sure. My understanding is that the original budget had forty thousand dollars in outreach and ten thousand for events. So it's not clear to me what that thirty thousand, if it would be coming all out of one or the other or somewhere split between them. I think hopefully all the council members have seen Gina Mathias' information that she provided about the intention behind those funds, so I can answer any questions about that. The goal was to move to kind of the next level of community engagement with a consulting firm for the outreach funds to kind of get to that next level of discussion on the various potential implementation plans for our climate change work. I think the events funding is much less clearly defined. We do try to have an annual event. I think there would be less difficulty to remove that from the budget, given everything else that's going on. So depending on how, I think Talisha was the person that put this forward, how you envisioned that thirty thousand coming out of one or the other or both, we it would, we could delay the events part of it without much impact to the programmatic and community outreach and engagement level that we were looking to do.
Okay. Great. I don't know if these hands are new or old, but I have Councilwoman Dibala and Circe.
Who's who's first?
Oh, Dibala, sorry.
Thank you. I this is the other emergency. I don't think we can wait a year to contemplate how we would plan continue climate planning and get outreach feedback on alternative, on reimagined options. And I think we need to retool strategies. I think we need to think about how we're gonna outreach, reach out in this in this climate. Waiting a year doesn't seem to me like an option, so I would like to keep these funds in.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Circe?
Thank you. So one of the things, and I think this is, you know, just a note for future budgets, that we need to be clear in terms of what we're trying to pay for, because on page one sixteen of the budget, it says additionally, there are funds included for outreach, collaboration, and public education, and it is at fifty thousand dollars. And that is different from the line item in terms of special events and programs, which are showing at twenty-five thousand dollars. So from reading in the budget, it gave the impression that a lot of the outreach and public education work was at fifty thousand dollars. And then when we asked about it, it seemed that the idea was that there would be a contractor to help with community engagement around our sustainability framework. I will say that right now, I work in surveys, I'm it is very hard right now to start planning for outreach, especially around things that may not be a matter of critical importance for people. So my concern is that we move forward on planning a lot of outreach around sustainability during a pandemic, and we're shocked when we don't get the level of engagement that we would like. I would much rather us, if the goal of these dollars, which I thought that's what they were for initially, is to do community outreach, especially those that are hard to reach, which I think is critically important. Right now, low to moderate income families are worried about where am I gonna work, how can I pay my rent, and making sure that they have something to eat. It is not to necessarily attend a sustainability meeting about sustainability framework goals. So in my mind, our monies would be better better spent by delaying the outreach activities. I mean, I would have said the same thing about the rec center, but we already have a contract underway, and it's because we've already funded the money. So I would stick with the reduction, because I think Gina's original idea of having a consultant help with the community engagement is important. I think it's right. I just think that we're gonna be so delayed because of the pandemic that it's not gonna be worth funding this year.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
It looks like, if I understand what Councilmember Circe is proposing here, it's not a complete cut, but a partial cut of the amount. Is that correct? Right, and so to me, the type of public engagement that we really need, particularly given, I think, that there was a feeling on the part of some people around the initial resolution, that there was a wish that we could have had more. I'm skeptical that we can do it with electronic or online kinds of things. So if the reality is that we can't do much for the first half of the year, why not cut it, you know, cut it in half and then hope that in the second half of the year, we can do something. If that's what Councilmember Circe is proposing, then I would support that, because I don't think we're gonna be able to do the whole amount we've planned for this upcoming fiscal year.
Okay. Councilman Kostic?
I also have some concerns about whether or not we're going to be able to move forward with some of the very targeted public outreach. I don't think it makes sense for us to do it in the first quarter or second quarter of the year, as Councilmember Circe noted. I also think, just in terms of thinking through what sort of sort of plan we're going to have and understanding that this is going to have economic impacts on people if we're putting into place new regulations. For me, it's very hard to wrap my head around that right now. So I think that's something that we're going to have have to have some longer-term discussions on. I also, at the same time, like the idea of being able to move forward and starting to get some input from residents and seeing where we are post, you know, post having experienced this pandemic and the economic impacts of it, to see what sort of input we do get from people later in the year. And I think, to me, that's something that I would like to see us start with more of the public outreach component in probably after January of the next year. I don't think it makes sense to do that prior to then. So I guess my question for staff then is, based on that, is this if we are thinking about things in that way, does it make sense to cut the budget by thirty thousand because we are not going to have time to do as much? Or is there a, you know, does it make sense to cut it by ten thousand because we are not going to be doing the events? Put it on the hold list? What's the impact of potentially not starting until January or, you know, midway through the year?
Yeah, I first wanna say thanks to Councilmember Circe. I had incorrectly stated the amount, so you're correct. Gina had put a fifty thousand dollar figure in outreach and twenty-five thousand in events, so I apologize for the wrong numbers. It's really hard to project what we're gonna be doing, primarily because our sustainability manager is teleworking right now and was ill. So she is hoping to get back up full steam and start developing programmatic planning. That being said, not knowing if we're looking at two months, three months, or six months from now, it's really difficult to know when when we can roll out the efforts. I think that part of the plan will be to start soliciting outreach components through RFPs and other avenues like that and see what we get back in terms of project costs and scope. And then we can bring that back to the council. If it turns out that we've reduced the budget to a point where we're not able to effectively contract for those services, then we could bring that back to the council and let you know that at that point in time.
Thank you. Then I guess I would like to have that thirty thousand be considered for the hold list, pending the information we get based on what the cost would be and the timing.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
I would just like to say I I'm kind of conflicted with this item, you know. I don't think that there will be any in-person surveys or focus groups this year or even into first, second quarter next year. But I do think it is important that we start talking to potential contractors and see what type of you know, program that they could put together for us. But I don't know, you know, what that would cost. And the proportional amount of thirty thousand dollars, how much of that would be considered for a contract? Would that be ten thousand dollars? Like Councilmember Kovar has recommended us only spending fifteen thousand dollars. I don't know. But I do think that anything that has to do with actual in-person activities with residents is not gonna happen anytime soon.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Councilman Dibala and Circe, I see hands up. Are those new or old?
In my case, in my case, it's new. I hear what everybody's saying about when and how and what it would look like to do outreach. I one reason I think this is important to continue to keep in here is the kind of thing that Councilmember Smith just said. We, in-person, large meetings not gonna happen in all likelihood for a while, but there's gotta be other ways to get input, and we need the advice from people who know how to do that. But the other reason is, the first time around, we had a small, a very we had one segment of the community involved, and I don't wanna repeat that experience. And so I want to as much as we can do the rethinking of the strategies, particularly the economic impacts, as much as possible, as early as possible with a wider range of folks, not with a wider range of folks, not can't, you know, can we reach everybody we wanted to? A few, a few months ago, when we talked, a couple of months ago, just a few weeks ago, when we talked about this. Well, the realities of the current situation, you know, things have changed a lot in a very short time. But the concept that we need to broaden the group that's involved in rethinking, retooling the strategies, I think that's really important not to lose that. And that's one reason I feel so feel so strongly about this money. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Councilmember Circe?
Um, so I I suggested a thirty thousand dollar cut primarily because I I I didn't think that we would be able to get a contractor to do the level of focus group work. Quite frankly, four fifty K. If if folks remember, we had to to fight to increase the amount of money during the last budget cycle for um the rec center consultant, right, um, community engagement folks. Um, particularly when we're trying to deal with um residents that speak multiple languages and trying to get into multifamily buildings, it's it's a little bit more costly to do. Um, in my mind, I was thinking that while um we would likely be remote for the vast majority of um at least the first half of the year, probably going into the second half of the year, that we would leave twenty thousand dollars in the budget for Gina to do things like mailings or developing flyers and just to remind people about the fact of, you know, tips and tricks about the framework and what it means. But then actually plan, um, and I would encourage um her to plan to ask for and maybe do some market analysis and kind of talk to some folks about what the cost of something like this would be because quite frankly, I think fifty thousand dollars was a little short. Um, and then once we have a better idea of the types of engagement um to actually put in the next budget of request for a more accurate account of what the outreach consultant would need. Um, and I think that would be at a and that would be for the next budget cycle. But I think that would be at a time where we would be out of this pandemic mode. It would be easier to engage those residents that are typically more challenging to engage and probably even more so now about things that's not related to bare necessities. Um, and then that way, we would have a more accurate account for what the contract cost should be. Um, so so that is my recommendation. I I would encourage us to still leave some money for her to play around with and kind of think of some ideas in terms of in, you know, kind of spreading the word and outreach, um, but not the full amount needed for a a contractor because I think you're going to need a little bit more money, and I think it would be helpful for her to do some market research to figure out how much money is needed. And the fielding and all of that work would probably be better off during the next fiscal year.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, just one other factor for people to consider. This fall is going to really be absorbed by the elections, and we have a lot of planning to do on our own. And I just think it's going to be very difficult to get people uh even if we really were to vouch back from the pandemic, which I think is very much up in the air, to to focus in a serious way on on what we're talking about here for the first half of this fiscal year. Just throw that into.
Okay. Um, great. Um, I guess I would say that I like the the tree canopy. Um, there is a sense of urgency for me on this one, and I have concerns taking the money out of the budget and then tying our hands into the future um for this year. And um while I agree that I I don't think in person discussion groups or other things are going to um take place anytime in the in the near future, I do think that we should, we need to keep money uh in the budget and um look at it because we we can't take another year. We said this back in March when we did um the Climate Change Act. Like, it's just, the clock has been ticking on this issue, and my concern is if we push it down the road for another year, not to say we're not doing any work, but if there is something that we could be doing, and I know Gina's been talking to the Rocky Mountain Institute about some work. I'd like to keep the option of being able to move this work um rather than making a decision right now to say that we're we're going to kind of tread water, which to me is what we do if we just keep the twenty thousand dollars in. So um if people aren't in favor of keeping it in, I'd ask that we at least move this to the hold for uh for the next couple of months.
And and I agree with that, and I would like to um thank the rest of you, and particularly to uh Councilmember Circe for your thoughts on this because the thinking, I think we are all grappling with the same questions about this is important and how do we move forward on it in this very difficult time and get around the obstacles that Councilmember Circe is so um so eloquently so eloquently outlined. Uh, I mean, they're real. They are very real, all those obstacles. Um, but this is, as I said to start, this is the other emergency, and I don't think we can wait to, we think we have to figure it out. Thank you.
Cool. All right. So I think on this one, this is another cut, keep, hold scenario. Um, if the city clerk
I feel like I'm playing cards.
I know. Uh, the city clerk will call this vote.
Councilmember Kovar? Cut, okay. Councilmember Dibala? I'm sorry, Councilmember Dibala?
Sorry, keep.
Uh, Councilmember Kostick?
Hold.
Councilmember Siemens?
Cut.
Councilmember Smith?
Cut.
Councilmember Circe?
Cut.
Mayor Stewart?
No, it doesn't matter, keep or hold, it's cutting. All right, um, where are we? I lost my my cheat sheet. Okay, so then that thirty thousand is getting cut from the budget. Um, next, we have public art um budget, twenty five thousand. Um, and this one, I'm going to ask the city manager to provide um a little bit more context for what is not being spent in FY twenty that could be carried over and what this twenty five thousand represents.
Yeah, there's about forty five thousand dollars that's in the current budget that we were going to be using for the the Lincoln Avenue mural um for um and for the Holton Lane sculpture with the concept that, and also some some repair work. And we ended up putting all of that on hold, knowing that once the pandemic hit, knowing that making those kind of contributions at this moment might not be a, might not be the right move, um, given as we assess our various needs. Um, and then the idea was that there was twenty five thousand dollars in for next year's budget. These are the only funds really that the um Arts and Humanities staff person um has to work with. So they, you know, they tend to be in the, these tend to be the capital items, but we do want to make sure that there's I guess I, so at this point, I have not redirected the funds for this current year. Uh, I've just put those on, I've just put those on hold. And so I think it's up to the council how you want to move forward.
Okay.
Um, I will say that there's also, you know, there has been an interest in trying to allocate, you know, trying to recognizing that artists are are folks that are also being hurt by um their, by the business activities, lack lack of business activities because of COVID nineteen. So those are all things you may wish to consider.
Okay. Um, Councilman Circe?
Hello. Um, so I'm trying to just make sure um because um when I initially proposed this, I think I I it I I had, I was working in the budget from the front to the back. And then I was like, oh, well, actually, no, I was working reverse from the back to the front. Um, and I just want to confirm, did we also not include any monies in the budget for the um the Arts and Humanities Committee? Like, I'm trying to understand, like, what's our full portfolio for for arts projects? Um, because I I now realize that that twenty five thousand dollars, I didn't necessarily see um the arts. Hold on, I'm just looking it up. I guess if you could just provide me with a little bit of an overview in terms of how what's currently in our budget, which doesn't look like much in terms of under HCD because it seems like bare bare supplies. And then I don't recall seeing money in some of the tables in the back for the the arts, the commission. Like, so I guess what I'm trying to figure out is there's there's nothing there for them either, right? So all we would have is twenty five thousand?
So Ms. Guesby, maybe you can help answer this, but I think the main, you know, the main work that's done is the is the work by the uh staff person and the intern, and the intern's position is ended. And then uh there's, there's a little bit of money that are given as um stipends to the person who identifies the art to hang in a building. And there's um, but that's a very small amount. So most of these amounts that that are here are the capital monies that to to build something, paint something, install public art.
This is Roz Grigsby.
Okay.
Yes, um, Ms. Ledlow, you are accurate in this. There is a small amount of money under contracts in the arts budget, which is the honorarium for performances, concerts. The poet laureate gets a small stipend, uh, those kinds of things. It's the Tacoma Park Arts Budget for their um their events in the city building. The public art money that you're looking at is in the, actually in the capital improvements budget. That is the capital money for larger arts projects. And as Ms. Ledlow already um explained, the money for FY twenty has been on hold. We were um had a shortlist for the Lincoln Avenue mural call for artists. And the money for FY twenty one in the public arts budget, the capital improvement, is listed at twenty five thousand.
Okay, so is the idea that you could either cut the funds in this year's budget um and I guess, hold on, let me stop because I think it's what, ten o'clock? Yeah, my brain is going to pot. So so is the idea that the monies that you all had set aside in FY twenty that you weren't able to do your work, can we could do the work this year for next year? Or is it, I guess I'm just trying to figure out like how prior year's money has anything to do with what you would be able to do with this year's money?
So so right now, the money could roll over uh if you wished. The the um you know, to me, it 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 just, it's just been on hold because it's not that you can't do a, you can't do an art mural, that you can't do a sculpture during a pandemic, you can. But just recognizing that there's a a lot of sensitivity about what needs may need to be met, I put them on hold.
Okay, okay. So now I think I know what I want to say. So I would say, you know, I would encourage us to um not start any art projects in FY twenty. In terms of the FY twenty one line item I have on the list, um I am, I can't believe I said this, I am okay with putting that item on hold. So the twenty five K and putting that on hold.
Okay, anyone else? Councilman Kostick?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the FY twenty and the FY twenty one funds also. So are you saying that the FY twenty unspent funds would otherwise become part of this public art? So if this is cut, those funds would be available for public art or?
It's money, it's money that would go into unassigned reserve, and then you could choose to, you know, there would be an argument saying, well, we were planning on using it for public art, we could do it again, but that's a council decision.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so I guess the question is um for this one, um, cut or uh put it on the hold list for public art for twenty five thousand?
Yeah, I'm sorry, could I, could I ask one other question?
Yeah, yeah.
So do we know for sure what projects this money would be used for?
No.
So the the ones that were mentioned on Lincoln and so on, those are not?
There's a, so on the Lincoln Avenue mural, um, quite a lot of work was done to get a shortlist of artists, but that the artist hasn't been chosen yet. The there is a a desire to put a um some kind of a sculptural feature at Holton in New Hampshire, which is important for our uh our business, you know, improvement looks. Um, so those are two projects that are, that certainly have been discussed with the council before. Um, and would be something that, you know, we would be interested in moving in, uh, but that's still a discussion.
So those are potential uses for the, would you say?
Yes, I mean, right now, they're on hold. Those, I mean, the council did identify the funds for both of those, for both Lincoln Avenue mural and Holton Lane. But um they are on hold now, and so in my view, that would be something the council would identify about taking them off the poll.
Any other questions on this one? Okay. Then the, I think the options on these two, what I'm hearing is is cut the twenty five thousand um that's um in the next budget for the public art, and this is sort of the capital projects, or put it on hold? The clerk?
Councilmember Kovar?
I'd like to see what the people represent the areas where it might end up have to say first, so I'm going to uh hold off for the moment.
All right, um. Councilmember Dibala?
I'm not sure I quite understand what Councilmember Kovar just said.
I'm just waiting. I don't, I
You don't want to vote yet.
But he's passing. Okay, um, I vote to hold.
Um, Councilmember Kostick?
I vote to cut.
Councilmember Siemens?
Cut.
Councilmember Smith?
Cut.
Councilmember Circe? Councilmember Circe?
She's still here?
Are you here?
It's not fair. She's got to say.
Hold on, sorry.
Okay.
You did sigh of desperation and indecision. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a hold. We do hold.
Okay, Councilmember Kovar?
I'll say cut.
Mayor Stewart?
No, it doesn't matter. I could say hold.
Doesn't matter, yeah.
All right, so that twenty five thousand is out of the budget. Um, the next two items, um, well, it it's the same item, but we had two things is the street maintenance um budget, overall, the street resurfacing budget is five hundred thousand dollars. We have um a proposal to cut fifty thousand or cut a hundred thousand. And just so folks know, this is also an item that is on the hold list as well. So if anyone wants to speak towards either one of those amounts or keeping the whole thing, or Councilmember Kovar?
My first? Yeah. So um I had proposed putting both the street resurfacing and the sidewalk work into the hold category. And so I would prefer to do that as opposed to um cutting them by small amounts, which smaller amounts, which is what's proposed here. And just a couple And just a couple of things I'd like to say. I think we've all recognized since the beginning of the budget process, as we began to see the extent of what we were going to be up against and everybody was going to be up against in terms of the pandemic, that for this budget, we really weren't going to know everything we need to know by the time we'd be working on the budget. And that includes the future path of the pandemic, the impact on residents and small businesses, um, and the funding that we'd be in line to get from other levels of government. And so all those things are still, we have, we can say we have some ideas, we're trying to address some of those things in the budget here, but we're really not going to know. And I, to me, it seems as if we're going to at least need potentially to have significant amounts of funding available to help us address some of those things. And so I'm not against having good sidewalks or having good streets. Um, but I think that large capital expenditures offer us one way of on a one-year basis being having the flexibility that we uh need, I think we all agree, at some level that we need to have, uh, to to address the three points that I mentioned, the uncertainties that I mentioned. And so to me, if money is set aside in the hold, as we've been doing on some of the smaller things we mentioned before, then we build into the budget this process where we check every two or three months, and then we can assess what's happening depending on the needs that emerge. And so depending on the needs that emerge, we can use it to assist residents or business people who are suffering because of the because of the pandemic, we can use it to fill some of the gaps. If we uh have fiscal uh drop offs in terms of the money we get from other levels of government, we can just leave it in the unassigned reserves, or we can use it or some of it for the originally intended purposes. This is a chance to really get um a big chunk of funds. And I will say for those who are concerned about the condition of the streets, and I I certainly was um supportive of Public Works when they paved certain streets recently, and some residents said they didn't feel like we needed to. And I think there is a strong case to be made for keeping ahead of that so that you don't end up having to pay more when the bed that underlies the surface has to be repaired. But we're talking about one year here, and the information we got from Public Works indicated that it's the two to four-year delays that cause the trouble. So this is one year, number one. Secondly, it's a year that had a mild winter. And thirdly, it's definitely a period we're in right now where driving is way, way, way down. And so I just want to appeal to my colleagues. This right here is the chance to actually get the money set aside that we all say we think we're going to need for the upcoming year. So I want to really appeal to my colleagues very strongly. This is the chance, take the two chunks of 500,000 dollars and shift them into our whole budget. And, you know, if something comes up where there's a really intense need on a given street or sidewalk, there's nothing to prevent us from doing. But this is not about brand-new sidewalks that have been requested by uh neighborhoods, and it's not about traffic calming. That stuff should continue to go forward. I'm just talking about the routine uh resurfacing or repaving and and the uh and the compliance issues with the side. So that's my proposal, thank you.
Great, and and just a reminder, we're we're not yet at the hold list right now. What what we're talking about is whether or not people want to reduce the street, actually take out of the budget um 50,000 or 100,000 dollars of the um street maintenance budget.
Yeah, and I and I just mentioned those because I see that as an alternative to to what you just said, mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, may I, may I interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
Uh, one of the things about the um street maintenance and the sidewalk um programs is that they are um done by condition. And so when we look at race equity issues, this is one of those cases where we're not looking at what people kind of vote on in the same respects, um, at least for the ADA and for the um and for and for roads. And it is something that, especially for road maintenance, it's better to keep it up. When we've talked to, you know, when we look at future years, revenues are going to be tough in future years. And if we're farther behind when we go into those, we will have real serious road condition issues. And so this is, this is one where I do feel strongly that it's it's better to keep up with the road condition uh work than uh to than to delay it even though we're in a pandemic.
Great, councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, first, I would like to say I certainly appreciate councilmember Kovar's passion on this subject. Um, I appreciate his perspective on it. I think you all have seen that I'm not hesitant to make cuts to the budget as we look at that this to tonight uh and this year. But this is one area where I have to agree with the city manager that uh I've seen the uh results and the difficulty that the council, past council have faced with road maintenance when we did not maintain the level of uh commitment and the level of uh funding that we need to do proper street maintenance. So I will vote to keep the to, I will vote nay on this item and not strike it in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, um, councilman Circe?
Sorry, I lost my cursor. Um, so I think one of the the challenges um that I've had is trying to figure out how to um quite frankly balance balance the necessary, the needs across all of the different areas. Um, my ward is one where, you know, street maintenance is important, and and more importantly are the sidewalks and traffic calming. I know that there there may be a number of folks who um would say that we could hold off on traffic calming. Um, but residents in my ward can't. Um, and so I will be very frank in saying I was trying to, I put forward street maintenance as a way to try to make sure that we can keep the sidewalk and traffic calming. I mean, I've had a child hit by hit by a car. I have children having to get on the bus in the middle of the street, like, so there are some safety issues. I mean, I I agree with councilmember Siemens, I think that street maintenance is important. It it, I would prefer to keep all of it. Um, but I I also keep in mind that there are some things, there's a balance that we have to make. Um, so I would like to hear from, you know, the director of Public Works in terms of the the impact of um delaying or reducing the street maintenance, which I I fully agree with what everyone has said thus far. Um, but the impact of a hun- of 50,000 dollars or 100,000 dollars on, you know, our ability to do street resurfacing during this time, um, where there may be some possibilities for, you know, lower costs in terms of contracting and things like that. Like, how substantial do you think potential cuts to this budget could be in terms of what we were planning for the year?
I'm sure, um, I think in general, um, in any individual year, to take a 50 or 100,000 dollar reduction in a 500,000 dollar budget is is mildly painful, but not incapacitating and would probably be unapparent to anybody in terms of what the impacts of those are for that particular timeframe. I think the the word of caution I have is when I looked back into our budgets the last five years, I think either two or three of those years, we reduced that 500,000 to 300,000. So we've already know that our past practice, even even since, uh, I think it was 2004, 2004, where we set up this policy of 500,000 dollar a year funding for uh street restoration as the as the way to keep our streets maintained in fair and better condition. We haven't been able to um meet that because of financial conditions uh in any particular year. So in isolation, 50,000 dollars is is not something that we're going to see an impact from. But the cumulative effect of knowing that these dollars are sitting there and prime, as you say, for use in other purposes, it's the accumulation of multi-years of underfunding that's going to get us into trouble.
Okay, um, councilman Dibala?
Yes, um, one of the reasons that I proposed 50,000 dollars in this and would also propose 50 or 100,000 in the hold list if this doesn't go through as a cut is because of what Daryl just said, that I was thinking that in this moment, a little bit off the top is not going to do a huge amount of damage. Whereas putting the entire 500,000 dollars on hold, I don't, I I don't see us not doing 500,000 dollars worth of road maintenance out of a 500,000 dollar proposal. I, I was looking, my idea was to look to take a little bit off the top again to, as councilmember Circe said, tough trade-offs so that we can do some of the other work on this list instead. So I would suggest that if if this does not pass, that I would like to see um some portion of the a a smaller portion of the 500,000 dollars um put on hold. Thank you.
Thank you, um, councilman Kostic?
Thank you, yeah, I think this is an important discussion, and I appreciate the information um from Ms. Brithwaite about the potential impacts. I was just looking back, and it looks like we spent uh 300,000 in FY19 and 500,000 in FY20. Um, I agree that we want to continue to maintain our streets um to top capacity so that we have safer streets for everyone and we have a better condition. And I think it's really obvious when you drive around that our our streets are in good condition compared to a lot of places. Um, for me, I think it makes sense to uh go ahead and cut the 50 because, um, as others have said, I think we're looking at really tough decisions right now. And this is one that I think we could potentially make without a huge overall impact. And I also think, given the significantly reduced traffic that we have right now and potentially into the future, we're probably not going to have uh the level of degradation of those streets as we might otherwise typically have. Um, I also want to, since we've talked a little bit about sidewalks here, I also want to appeal to my colleagues to think about if if you're looking for a place to cut. Personally, I think uh while it is very, very important to maintain our streets, and we don't want to be hit with large uh bills because we haven't done that in the future, you know, people are walking right now, that's what everyone is doing. If you go outside, you see huge numbers of people walking, you see kids, you see grownups, you see people who are not walking as much as they were previously. And uh, you know, as far as we can tell, that's probably going to continue into the near future, if not longer. You know, I certainly, one of the things I hope is that as we move into the future, people will continue some of these positive habits that they have taken from this pandemic and drive less and spend more time at home and spend more time walking around and um walk to Old Town instead of driving when they're going there. Um, or walk to the crossroads instead of driving, um, whenever those things are possible. So I also want to flag the fact that a lot of our city and and S H A sidewalks are in really bad shape. And um they are not on the same cycle of regular maintenance that our streets are on. The streets are on this regular cycle of 20 years um there and and evaluation and making sure that they're constantly being repaired and the sidewalks are not. So I want people to think about that when you're thinking about these two numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman Kovar?
I just want to clarify, I'm not proposing any actual cuts in sidewalk or street repair. I'm voting against any proposals for cuts in those. I'm asking that the money be put on hold while we assess what's happening, what our needs are in terms of coronavirus. And so if things go well, we'll have all that money there. So I agree with those who say the maintenance of those streets is important and and the maintenance of sidewalks is important. I'm not asking that those be cut, I'm asking that they be put into hold.
Right, and we're not at the hold that, yeah.
Right, and that's fine, I just, but it's interconnected, so I just want, I want to be clear on that.
Great, um, okay, let's, uh, councilman Circe? I can't hear you. No, still can't hear you?
Unmute myself.
Good, you're good. Yes.
Sorry, um, I know that we're not supposed to talk about uh the hold list and all of that jazz just yet, and I'm I'm sorry. Um, but I do want to remind my colleagues that mathematically, if we are putting things on hold, they still count against our total expenditures and will need to be accounted for in our tax rate. So when we are talking about holds, it's important to not think that we're not spending taxpayer dollars because we still are. Um, so I I do just want to say that to make sure that um that we're not just kind of putting things in in hold because we don't want to necessarily cut. So I I just wanted to make sure that that point is understood unless I'm missing something.
Great, great, no, thank you for that reminder. Um, so what I'll say on the um the road maintenance is I I, you know, having, I don't know, this is my fourth, fifth, sixth budget, uh, is that um as the director of Public Works stated, the sidewalks and the street maintenance is the place every year people go to to kind of raid and and um look for extra dollars to fund other things. And so it does, um, it always does make me nervous to um cut these places. Um, and in particular, um, I I mean, I think we know, just given all the utility work um that's been done in the city, uh, what it's like to drive on um roads with poor conditions. Um, we have a lot of streets in the city that some are narrow, um, some are curvy, we have hills and other things. And I just, I get concerned as we're thinking about, um, you know, making sure that we're doing basic services and keeping certain things like infrastructure um uh functioning uh for the community. Um, so, you know, I again, I understand 50 or 100 may not seem like a lot in a 500,000 dollar um budget, but um it, I think that's where I'm coming down on at the moment, is my concern that it's 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 always being eaten away at, so. All right, well, the, so I guess the the vote on this one is either keep um the um the full street maintenance in the budget, and we'll talk about whether or not it gets on hold in a minute, cut 50,000 or cut 100,000?
Okay. All right, councilmember Kovar?
Keep.
Councilmember Dibala?
Cut 50K.
Councilmember Kostic?
Cut 50K.
Councilmember Siemens?
Keep.
Councilmember Smith?
Cut 50,000.
Councilmember Circe?
Cut 50,000.
There we go, uh, mayor Stewart?
I was gonna keep, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Um, all right, so then we we cut the 50, that means this, the 100 goes away and we have the 50. Um, oops, I did that wrong, wait one second, everybody. Um, this 100 goes away, okay, and we kept the 50. All right, the next was ADA sidewalk. Uh, the proposal is to cut that work by 50,000, and this is also a budget of 500,000. Um, I think councilman Kostic spoke to this already. Does anyone want to speak to this? Councilman Kostic?
I'll speak again, um, I just want to note, uh, one of the projects that I believe would be uh planned for the coming year is on Goody Avenue, which um has both uh sidewalk quality issues and width issues. It's a one-way, or it's a, it's a dead-end street that um is pretty narrow when you consider parking on both sides. It's extremely uh steep, so someone using a wheelchair would have to use the street and um would have a lot of challenge, I think, trying to get up there. Um, the, there's also a lot of stormwater um issues there and uh sandbags in the middle of the sidewalk because of the um the need for improved sidewalks to improve drainage along the curb line. So uh this is a a project that I think needs to move forward and that I'd like to see move forward. Um, the S H A sidewalks as well, um, I think we need, we have been postponing to an extent, and I'm very pleased to hear from um Ms. Braithwaite that it sounds like we're going to move forward with the One Solon Carroll Avenue in this fiscal year. But that's something that, again, a lot of people are using. Those are the main thoroughfares of the city. And I think we really want to make sure as many people are walking in the community that we continue to fund those projects.
Great. Councilman Dibala?
Yes, I wanted to get clear because I'm not whether the Goody Avenue money is in this fiscal year or next fiscal year or both because I had the impression that the stormwater money is in this year's budget. And so I'm wondering about them, about them. And I, and I recognize, I recognize the importance of trying to do those at the same time. But I'm, I'm just not clear where the fiscal year, the sidewalk piece is in.
Sure. For the ADA funds for the city sidewalks, the FY twenty, the assumption is that the allocation will be almost entirely used on Flower Avenue, the portion of the city sidewalks to be made ADA compliant. So we've reserved using any, any of the funding in FY twenty, so we have it available for the Flower Avenue project. So we haven't done any ADA work in fiscal year twenty as a result of waiting for those funds to be used on Flower. So when we pick back up again in FY twenty one, there's a number of remaining pieces of work that need to be done. Wards one, three, and and four all have outstanding sidewalks that need to be completed for the ADA compliance.
On the city side.
Are you referring to Flower?
Go on. I'll, maybe I misunderstood you.
So at any rate, the program of work for FY twenty one can be spent in any of those three wards. That's where we have a remaining outstanding list of sidewalks that we haven't yet gotten to. One of the most complex is the one that Casey mentioned, Goody Avenue. So that's gonna require, we've already done the design work for that and had several community discussions. We'll need to finalize the plans on that and then move forward. That, that project alone will use most of the funding.
And is that the next one on the list for?
It, it depends whether or not we have got a significant enough community consensus on the latest design plans or whether we would then pivot back to where we stopped in Ward one. We've done half of Maple Avenue and not the other half. And there's a couple other streets in Ward one that need to be done. There's a couple of streets in Ward four that need to be completed. And largely Goody Avenue and in Ward three. So if you look through the CIP, you'll see that we have projected out needs for ADA funds on city sidewalks over the next five years.
So do you distinguish between ADA funds on city streets and ADA funds on states, state highways? Because state?
Yes, yes. Those are two different pots of money.
So would it make sense to split this in half then? And because I, when I proposed this, I don't think I realized that they were two different pots.
Okay, yeah, because when someone said five hundred thousand, I was gonna ask for clarity because each of those in the proposed FY twenty budget is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for ADA work and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for state highway ADA work. So again, in and of itself, a fifty thousand dollar piece of, you know, amount of funding would be you know, imperceptible in terms of an individual year. It's been our goal to try to fund it at, at a level that's actually, I think originally we were looking at five hundred thousand dollars a year to, to, to complete the work of ADA compliance on both city streets and state highway roads.
If I could interrupt just briefly, Councilmember Dibala, I know we had a discussion earlier about the stormwater and the project related to Manor Circle and the SHA sidewalk work there. And so I'm, I think that might be the project that you were thinking of that's tied in with the stormwater itself. And and Daryl, my understanding is that that is that is in this year's budget, not next year's.
That was a project we have included in the FY twenty program plan.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Smith.
Ms. Braithwaite, I just had a question about the state highway sidewalks. How are we reimbursed? Are we reimbursed for that work in the same fiscal year that it occurs? Or does reimbursement happen a couple of years, a couple of fiscal years down the road?
There, there is no reimbursement. The, the point of view from state highway is that the maintenance of the sidewalk component, even though it's in a state right of way and not a city right of way, is the municipality's responsibility.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, it's something that we would love to see lobbied.
Yep. Oh, all right. So what's on the table right now is a cut of fifty thousand in the ADA sidewalk budget. Will the clerk call a roll?
And, and to be clear, that would be, could be out of either pot. Councilmember Kovar?
No.
Councilmember Dibala? I'm sorry, no is to not cut or?
Right.
Yes. Councilmember Caustic?
No.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes. All right. Councilmember Smith?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Cersei? Councilmember Cersei?
No.
Mayor Stewart?
No. All right. So this one sidewalks does not get taken out of the budget, the fifty thousand. All right. The next was sidewalks and traffic calming. So this is a hundred thousand dollars and Ms. Braithwaite, am I, do you want to just speak to the difference between this line item and the one we were just talking about?
Sure. The previous discussion was the ADA compliance work. That's on existing sidewalks. This next item is the line item we have in the capital budget for new sidewalks and traffic calming. We've traditionally combined those in a budget line in the CIP. And we have proposed in FY twenty one, a hundred thousand dollars for next year. So I believe that proposal would eliminate those funds.
Thank you. Councilman Cersei.
Um, so I just want to make sure that, that I'm clear. So I, I thought that this hundred thousand dollars could address a number of the traffic calming measures that have been requested and patiently waited upon for residents in Ward six who are dealing with the negative implications tied to purple line construction, correct?
Yes.
And this money would also cover, for my colleagues who are not aware, because of some of our, the Ethan Allen Gateway Intersection, the residents that are at Lurch and Kirkland are now dealing with a number of people who are turning from New Hampshire Avenue through their neighborhood to try to get to East West Highway without stopping at that four way stop. So we have a lot of traffic cut through, very small sidewalk, to the point where the parents stand in the middle of the street because of where their bus stop comes through to get their children on and off the bus. So would this, this money also kind of help to address some of those issues in that neighborhood as well?
Yeah, the traffic calming component, yes, would be funded from that budget.
Yeah. So I, I completely understand the need to be financially prudent. But I want to stress that these are matters of public safety. We have had a number of residents, I've had two cars, one truck that has been totaled because of speeders along Wildwood Drive, and people who are not familiar that are just cutting through because of the purple line. I've had a child hit. It, it is at a point now where it is ridiculous. We've lobbied and we've lobbied and we've lobbied. But what we have been told time and time again is that city streets and traffic calming on city streets are the city's responsibility. So I want to encourage and urge my colleagues to please support this, these funds. Because this is not an issue that can wait. The residents have waited. They've waited. And now is the time for us to act. Thank you.
Next, we, oh, sorry, hold on. Next, Councilwoman McCaustic and then Dibala.
I'll say ditto. I agree, we need to spend money on this now and not wait. This is something that is, you know, we do have less traffic right now, but this has not changed the fact that people are still speeding. In fact, people are continuing to speed even more. And we see cars just zooming around because there isn't a lot of traffic. So I think we need to go ahead and fund this. And, you know, there are traffic calming requests and concerns about traffic calming throughout the city. And it's clear that the ones related to the purple line construction are really critical and serious. And I think building on those, there are others that are also, you know, in my ward and I know in others as well, where people are experiencing a lot of traffic and a lot of speeding. So I feel this is really important.
Councilman Dibala?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. My question is, can this all be, is this plan to all be used potentially for traffic calming? Or is there some new sidewalk work on the list? And is it possible to redirect these funds to traffic calming?
We have a number of new sidewalk requests in the queue. There's a section, Block of Kansas Avenue, the seventy nine hundred block of Maple Avenue. And as Councilmember Cersei mentioned, there's the Hopewell, Kentland, Large neighborhood where they have requested a sidewalk.
And I'd like just to note that this is normally funded at five hundred thousand. And I took the step of just recognizing that we were in a pandemic and trying to make some significant cuts, I moved money into the FY twenty two budget. The thinking that I had was that new sidewalks are you know, are not the road conditions, which is something that can deteriorate. And they're not ADA corrections, which I feel are really important to make. But there's a little bit more flexibility with new sidewalks. That said, the traffic calming needs are important. And so I didn't want to cut everything out of that. So this is not the recommendation of the Public Works Director. I just want to note that I moved a bunch of the money into FY twenty two, just recognizing that difficult choices needed to be made, but I could easily argue that this number could be bigger. It likely would be focused primarily on, on traffic calming and a, and a little bit of new sidewalk.
Anything else, Councilman Dibala?
No, that was, that was my question was, was how, what's the plan for it being spent? And I think you've answered that. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Smith?
Uh, I was the one who proposed this reduction of a hundred thousand dollars. I just want to make sure I understand from Ms. Braithwaite that if this hundred thousand dollars went forward in the budget, you could actually complete some of the projects that Councilmember Cersei mentioned.
Yes, yeah. Many of them are, are fairly simple and very specific requests from the neighborhood in terms of speed bumps in the seventy three hundred block and seventy six hundred block at Glen Side. The one on Large, Kentland and Hopewell where we require a design process. So there'll be some expenditure, just bringing in a consulting engineering group to develop the designs and we'll hold community meetings to discuss that plan. So we will have no trouble spending every penny of that hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Well, I would like to be supportive of Councilmember Cersei and the residents of Ward six. So I would draw my proposed cut of one hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, it is taken off. If nobody wants to add it back in, we will just take it off and move on to the next thing. Any objections to that?
Just one quick point. I, I'm glad it's being removed because I don't support it. And just something for the city manager to think about, we don't have to talk about it now, but with fewer cars on the road everywhere where I walk, I just see cars driving really unsafely. And I know it's probably not anywhere near the top and what police enforcement can really focus on these days. But it strikes me as something that, you know, even the optional stop sign in front of my house has somehow become even more optional. And, you know, my wife almost got hit by a bike that didn't stop at a stop sign today. And it's, it's happening everywhere. So I agree that the, these priority areas in Ward six need to be addressed, but to the extent that the police can somehow think about that, I think it would be an important.
It is very serious. You know, it's, it's telling that our speed camera money is not reduced because people are definitely driving more unsafely.
All right. So moving on, just to kind of give people a running tally of the cuts we've made so far. We've made a million and seventy four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars worth of cuts to the budget at the moment. So the next item is bike improvements. And I don't know, is that the same manager or the Director of Public Works?
Do you want to, I don't, I don't know who was trying to speak. It wasn't me. But Ms. Grisbee, would you spoke, speak for a moment about the bike improvements? Still on the line?
Thing we use. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Now I can. Go ahead, start again.
The bike improvement money is, is funding that we use to look at a combination of things to make biking safer and a more viable option for people. It's part of the sustainability efforts of the city and the racial equity issues as well. So those funds tend to be for things like improvements to possible signage or bike lanes. We've been working for a couple of years on looking at some protected bike lanes. It also includes infrastructural things like where to park them. Some of the issues surrounding the Capitol Bike Share and information education. But it's really specific improvements, including the maintenance stations that we have. We have three maintenance stations in the city, one at the city building, one on New Hampshire and one on the Metropolitan Branch Trail. So people can get quick access when they need it for repairs.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I was the person who put this one forward and the next two, actually. And the background to that is that I was looking at the capital projects and as everybody knows, and as we've talked about, they're rated according to a four point scale from Roman numerals from one to four. And so what I did was to look at the threes and fours, which are certainly still meritorious things to spend money on, in my opinion, as far as the capital improvement plan. But I looked at the threes and fours that were not specifically related to police and public safety that didn't have other magic grants that went with them and to see whether that was an area for saving. So the next three items, and I'm not exactly sure why the lobby door one was, was crossed off because that was, that was added as well. And so this is an example of, of one of those. And I, I thought it would be important for us to discuss. We're in a difficult situation budgetarily with the, with COVID. And this is one of those examples of a capital project that's rated three or four.
If I may just add one, if I could just add one more piece, that what we're seeing with the urban responses to COVID around the country are that in fact, biking becomes a much more important option for people who are leery or uncomfortable with public transit options and health and safety issues. And so we thought before the shutdown that all of a sudden Capitol Bike Share increased and people rode much more. So I feel like this is worth putting in a broader context of how individuals are making decisions for where they need to be that they can get there safely.
All right, you convinced me. I'll drop it.
All right, I'm taking it out. All right, bike improvements is off. The next was bus shelters.
Yeah, and Ross sent me a long email about this too, so maybe. Yeah, and Ross sent me a long email about this too, so maybe, Ross, if you wouldn't mind explaining that too.
Sure. Um, so this is really the bus stop improvement category. As you all recall, we had a technical assistance grant from the Council of Governments this year to look at amenities, ADA accessibility, compliance for our bus stops. And we were before council in January with mapping. We had done extensive background work on ridership and race equity issues for our bus stops. And um, council at that time approved a prioritization of improvements, particularly bus shelters for stops based on ridership, race equity, sustainability impact, cost and safety, um, not particularly in a ranked order. So the next step is that the study wa, is wrapping up and the um, presentation will come to council. May twentieth is the tentative date for you to see. What we know preliminarily is that something like sixty percent of the bus stops in the city are not ADA compliant. And the single biggest piece of that is inadequate landing pads. And so what we wanted was to um, make a big step forward on the ADA issues as well as bus shelters for those high ridership stops where we might have a hundred people standing out in the rain and the heat and the elements um, in order to get buses on, as an average daily ridership. And as part of looking at all the options that the city is making available to people to affect our climate impact stuff, we thought making buses a better option, making the, the experience safer and more comfortable helps people change that equation as they look at what kinds of choices they make.
Right, so the, and the reason that I had asked about this one was because initially when we talked about this, as I recall, um, the group of busiest bus stops that didn't have shelters is measured by the number of um, riders. Um, we were working with an outside group that was going to fund those. And then we were going to try to deal with the other ones ourselves later. And.
Right, so the.
Felt through, is that right?
So the existing bus shelters in, in the city are provided for, at no cost to the city in exchange for the advertising dollars by Insight. Um, is the name of the company. And they are not getting advertising revenue right now. And so they have been in communication with us saying they are not going to install any new, any shelters currently. I don't know what their timeframe is. I don't think they know. So what we had done was say, let's advocate for their installing those high ridership, especially Ethan Allen in New Hampshire, those um, sites that they are, that are um, that Insight hadn't, we had expected to do. And then we would start looking at grant money or uh, city funds to install ones that we know Insight would not because it wouldn't meet their advertising criteria. So that, that is off the table at the moment. That still means we've got some people standing out there in the elements trying to get buses. And we'd like to move forward on um, on what we can, recognizing we'll circle back with Insight again to encourage them to step up.
With just the high priority ones based on ridership or everyone?
So the highest priority ones are the two at Ethan Allen in New Hampshire and then the one at E, um, New Hampshire and Holton, which was uh, damaged in an accident. And can, and Insight will not replace it until it is made ADA accessible. So that's been the delay on that one. As it stands now with their latest missive, I'm not sure that Insight would replace it now either until they again have rev, revenue coming in. So we would, I think what we would do is look at those top priority, look at the ones that we think we can reasonably expect Insight to do in the maybe midterm and then start chipping away at the others that, that we, that are next in the next tier of priority.
Are you done, Councilmember Kober?
Yeah, and just to be clear, when I first put this on here is because I was under the impression that we had, that we were going, that we were inclined to have uh, all these high priority ones paid for, which actually was the earlier plan. And that's now not happening, I think, based on what Ms. Grisby is saying because of the changes that have occurred as a result of the.
So do you want to keep this on or you?
No, I don't, I don't want to keep it.
All right, so it's gone. All right.
Um, and Councilmember Kovar, I just want to, just want to mention on the lobby doors, that was coming out of the Facility Maintenance Reserve, so it wasn't the regular general fund. It wasn't the, that was from the, just like the E R R, the Facility Maintenance Reserve. So that's why the lobby doors were suggested taking on.
Okay. That doesn't have an effect on the uh, on the budget or the tax rate?
That's right.
All right, thank you.
All right, um, so Ms. Grisby, don't go away. We try, I tried to lump all your stuff together. Um, next we have the uh, land management um, plan. And I know when we did the work session a couple of weeks ago, you spoke to us um, about where we are with this, what the plans were. Um, the entire budget for this is thirty thousand. Um, they're on, it's on the reconciliation list as potentially cutting um, the full budget. Um, and then there's another recommendation for cutting half of it. Um, if you wanted to speak to it quickly about, remind everyone um, what this is, where you are in the process and your thoughts on it.
Sure, definitely. Um, as you recall, we've been working on the public land management plan. And we are somewhat stymied because the stage we should be in now is a very active public outreach and engagement. And obviously that's um, that we're not doing that in, in the way we had imagined doing it. The expectation would be that the plan would be in front of council um, fairly soon. So we are delayed. And that then these funds would be used to begin implementing council's priorities coming out of this plan. So that we have ongoing needs that we do regularly in terms of maintenance and upkeep. We install benches and picnic tables and we identify needs in parks and public spaces. We have also done an extensive inventory this year of all kinds of amenities in our public spaces. And so we would have that in hand moving forward to look at what kinds of improvements need to be happening. We are delayed. Um, and so I, I don't have any um, crystal ball on when things will be moving forward. And we are looking at alternative ways to, to gather input and do public outreach. What I would be, I would be disappointed is that when council does see this and take action, that we then don't have any tools to use to start implementing council's priorities on public space. So that's worth keeping in mind because I think the point is we know there are inequities in the space in the city and who has access and what kinds of space they have access to and how well is it maintained. And so we would very much like to be able to move forward on those questions.
Great. Um, and given, and let me just ask you one other question. And given the delays you see for the budget moving forward, um, do you think that it would be possible to implement some things if we left fifteen thousand in? Or is that just sort of like, not even worth it kind of thing?
No, I think, I think we can do smaller things with whatever funds council sees fit to allocate. I think there are, there are many needs and we can take steps in the, in that direction. Um, more is always better, but we can, we can work with whatever we have.
Okay. Um, let's see, I have Councilwoman Cersei and then Kostic.
Um, thank you so much um, for um, kind of explaining. I think one of the challenges that I had in terms of this line item is I've seen it in the budget for multiple years in a row. Um, and so my, I, I recognize that um, there are some, um, there's a lot of additional work that needs to be done in terms of finalizing the plan, engaging and, you know, getting everyone socialized to some of your priority recommendations for different types of activities that we may want to include. But I am continuing to get concerned about the fact that we're adding money in the budget for, and prep for a project that we're not doing or that we haven't done, and it's been in the budget for a couple of years now. Um, so, so I'm of the mindset, I would be open to staff working this year on really finalizing that plan. And then working into the next fiscal year's budget, a, a, a request based on the strategies and the recommendations that you made when we've actually seen the plans in terms of what you're proposing. And I, and I completely recognize that there's like, your staff is limited. You're working on a plethora of things. You have New Hampshire Avenue bikeways, like, it's a lot. Um, but I, I also want to make sure that we're not um, continuing to put things in the budget and, and have people pay for things in the budget when we're not ready to ask for the money yet. Um, so, so that's, that's my thought on um, on, on this particular item.
Great, Councilwoman.
So if, if I can just answer that quickly, there, the, the plan itself, yes, is awaiting council's approval. And even so, there are funds spent out of that every year on things that staff identifies as needs and that we move forward on installing. So I think there's a bit of a yes and because we want to be doing the work that council identifies as most important. And getting there includes the public engagement piece that we have not had an opportunity to do yet. That's not to say that we don't move forward on the public space improvements along the way.
Okay, so, so this money is not for implementing, and I could be totally wrong with my interpretation of what this money was supposed to be. Um, I know that a couple of years ago, if, or maybe it was last year, the idea was that these monies were supposed to be um, to implement a priority project that's identified in the plan. So once we kind of come back and we've engaged the community, we've identified these hotspots of where we really want to install um, an open space or a public space um, thing, whatever the air quotes thing is, um, that these thirty thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars would go towards that. So is it that these monies are really not necessarily to implement the plan, but are just funds that we're using right now to do other types of open space activities that while we're working on the plan? I guess I'm trying to make sure I understand where, what this money is designed to do.
So in the FY twenty-one budget, it is absolutely intended to implement the plan. And for this year, because of the delay, we have been looking at other amenities that we know can make a difference now. Um, because of, because it may be an opportunity.
Okay. Um, and I don't, I don't know, city manager, if you have any, any thoughts? Um, in terms of where we would, in terms of having a plan approved?
Okay. Well, I mean, I, I think the, the plan needs to move forward. I, I do want to speak to the fact that this has been in the budget before and that was, um, it was delayed primarily because we had staff vacancies. And so one of the problems that, that we have when we have vacancies is that not everything gets done. Um, but on, on this, there's, I think there really is the concept of implementing the plan. And, you know, I know that your ward in particular has not had some amenities that really, uh, that it really does deserve. Some of the alternatives before a full plan is adopted by the council and some, and a priority project is identified. You know, sometimes it's just a little bench area or some of those things. It's not a lot of money, but it's something that, that kind of spruces up an area, makes some improvements to an area that, that makes a difference. So I can understand Ms. Grisby saying, you know, some money in there, we could, you know, work with the council on a couple of ideas uh, versus the full thirty thousand. The actual, you know, real, I don't anticipate this, the council being able to spend a lot of time on this along with staff, just with the COVID stuff. I, I just don't see that um, moving that fast as much as, as much as we would love to have that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Kostic?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I think based on the fact that um, we probably won't be able to finish this plan um, with the outreach component that was mentioned and actually take a lot of action on this in the first half of the year. Um, to me, it makes sense to cut this in half and do the fifteen thousand. Um, what I'm wondering is, and I know this isn't um, a plan, part of this particular plan and not something we're going to decide tonight, but just as a thought, is that it seems to me there are going to be some increased um, needs for changes to the way that the public interacts in public spaces based on um, social distancing and trying to maintain those distances. And I'm wondering whether maybe some of that fifteen thousand could be utilized as part of rethinking how we have some of our public spaces designed and providing some additional opportunities for safety in those spaces.
Yeah, if I can, I think that, that's, that's a major point. And we try to interconnect these. So this in some respects interconnects with um, better landing spaces at bus stops. Um, it interconnects with um, the, the, the bike amenities and all of those kinds of things. I mean, one of the problems with the bus stops is if you're waiting, you don't want to stand six feet, you want to stand six feet away from another person waiting for a bus. I mean, when we want the sidewalks, we want them a little wider. You want us, you want a place where you can pull over, step aside while another person passes. So I think there's going to be a lot of those kinds of uh, really looking at our infrastructure because this is not going to be something that just goes away. We, you know, it is something that we should in many places look at. How cramped is the public space and are there some ways to address it? Um, so, so one of the things that I don't like in the budget here is that there's a number of kind of these smaller items, twenty-five thousand, you know, thirty thousand, forty thousand, whatever. But really, they work together. And so in one sense, we were trying to be specific so you know what they are. But in another sense, um, and, and fortunately, our staff talks to each other and really wants to coordinate on where the improvements might go so that they complement each other and, and they're greater than the sum of their, their parts.
Sure, that makes a lot of sense. Um, and yeah, I would, I would be supportive of the fifteen thousand. And I'm looking forward to hearing a little more about the plan in a couple of weeks and seeing particularly where we can focus on that social distancing. I think that would be really useful.
Great. Um, seeing no hands um, on this one. Um, why don't we go around and see if people want to um, keep um, the full amount? Um, cut um, the, the, cut the full amount, the thirty thousand or cut half? Okay, Councilmember Kovar?
Cut the full amount.
Councilmember Dibala?
Half.
Councilmember Kostic?
Half.
Councilmember Siemens?
Oh.
Councilmember Smith?
Half.
Councilmember Cersei?
Half.
Mayor Stewart? Oh, the half, all right. Um, terrific, all right. Um, I know it's getting um, late and we're, we're getting through um, our items here. I appreciate everyone sticking with this. Um, so for the next two, I want to take a moment. Um, there were a number of um, things related to um, support COVID-nineteen fund support to residents that have been added to the list or talked about. As folks know, we have our uh, emergency assistance uh, fund. So there's been conversations of adding um, to that. Uh, we know as of um, from Grace Wiggins that as of, I think it was February of this year, we had exhausted the funds that were uh, allocated in that from our budget. Um, so there's proposals um, ranging from adding twenty to fifty thousand. Um, in addition, from um, Samira Cook Gaines, we had recommendations for adding more to our workforce development. There are line items there for that. Um, Councilwoman Cersei has um, added additional funding for um, uh, partnership folk, uh, programs focused on food insecurity, uh, additional property tax program. food insecurity, additional property tax program assistance, assistance to residents in, or resident association in multifamily buildings, were all things. One of, and then I also put down here, not contributing to the housing reserve because these all seem to really work together in some ways and should be thought of as a package. And so if folks don't, don't mind, I think what I'd like to propose is for us to actually come up with a, a figure that we would like to add to this budget for COVID-19 fund to support residents and have the, the staff over the next couple of months, as the city manager said when we first started meeting tonight, really assess where these funds could best be used. And given the work, as a number of residents talked about earlier this evening, work that's being done at the county level or by nonprofits, where, where are we best to allocate our city funds specifically? To either meet a need that's not being met by some other entity? Or where we could use funds to actually leverage some of their funding through the county or a nonprofit or their resources? So, so that's one bucket. And then the other is our support to small businesses. We talked about potentially cutting or maybe reallocating the neighborhood commercial development money. This is money for facade work. It is outside of the matching that we need for the state grant. So that's 25,000. Councilwoman Circe has put in additional funding for OTBA and the Crossroads Development Authority. We have money in here to increase assistance through our mini grant program. And then Samira Cook-Gaines, our community development manager, economic development manager, excuse me, requested additional funds for small business assistance. And so that's another bucket of things. That last line, keep separate for now. It's a separate item. So what I'd like to do is just ask everyone to take a few minutes, look at that. And if there are no objections, I'd like the council to rather propose and think about what would be an overall amount that we want to put in to the general support for residents and then support to small businesses. I see councilmember Smith and Dibala have hands up. Would that, is that to speak to this or to have objections to the way I'm going with this?
No, to speak to it.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay. Alright, and then I know we have, I know it's getting late and, but we are so lucky to have incredibly dedicated staff who are still on the line. I know we have Grace Wiggins and Samira Cook-Gaines and want to give them the opportunity if they want to speak to this at all regarding the funding levels that they see would be useful for their work right now. So I don't know, I'll open it up to Grace or Samira.
Can, can we speak to this before you move on?
Well, I, I was going to have the staff.
Okay, okay. I was going to suggest that, well, I'll hold it. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. It's Grace Wiggins. Thank you so much, Mayor Stewart, for kind of condensing some of this into support for residents. I do think, you know, we're moving into a really tough time. The one thing that I, you know, the numbers seem a little too low. I know that you referenced the $30,000 that was appropriated this past fiscal year to serve folks through our emergency assistance fund. And what, what we're hearing on the ground is that many of our families are really going to have complex issues. So it may have only been one thing or another. And by that, I mean, it could have been rent or utility disconnection. But because many of our residents are losing all of their income, there are other, there are just other expenses that are going to play a part. So they can't make their car payment on top of that. They can't pay the insurance on their car. They can't, you know, cover loans that they've gotten against their employment and their payroll check. So we've already had conversations with our contractor, Musk. And, you know, we've started talking about what our collective strategy is going to be. And so I've kind of teed this up with them as well as the county and the Department of Health and Human Services. And we're trying to figure out how we're going to comprehensively help families. Just to, and the mayor is familiar with this as well as the city manager, just to give you all, on the council, a little feel for what we're dealing with this week again. One of our residents tested positive, is currently hospitalized, is on a ventilator, is the primary breadwinner, has an outstanding tax debt, has an outstanding car note, has an outstanding rent payment. And her family didn't realize that she had not covered the rent. And they have no access to the money. And, you know, there are a number of other outstanding commitments. And so the number, and I don't know which number, I think these are two different proposals, but I think looking at the higher number is going to make a significant difference when we're looking at the emergency assistance fund. So I'll take a break just to take a breath. Questions about that? Before I kind of breathe, I want to just reiterate that everybody that's contacting us and contacting the city is in crisis. Even though the courts aren't closed now, the courts aren't open now and things are somewhat in moratorium, our families, both our rental as well as our homeowners, are really worried. The one thing that I heard from a community partner about forbearances on loans, home loans, is that you may have a couple of months to take a deep breath to get it all together, but that may mean you have to make a lump sum payment. So just because you haven't paid for March, April and May, and we've said, okay, we'll give you some time, it may mean that families will have to pull all of those dollars together, depending on, you know, how those mortgages are backed, to make a lump sum payment. And that may just completely debilitate a family and reduce the amount of money that they have to operate with to save their home, to save their housing, or some other significant, you know, expense. So I'll take a breath there.
Grace, Grace, could I also, just because it's kind of part of that complex statement? Thank you, Mayor Stewart and council and fellow colleagues. I just want to wrap that workforce development piece into those complex issues. Because on top of, you know, that one example family for, for, that Grace just gave, this family was not, they were underemployed to begin with. This family did not have a stable enough income or work, workforce kind of opportunity to even be prepared for something like this. Now, we'll compound that with the rest of the city and the tremendous loss of work and work availability. So just to kind of layer that in, the city manager spoke about these small numbers that are actually interconnected. And that's what the workforce development piece is. So as much as the emergency assistance will deal with one thing, it can't also then, you know, get the family up on its feet to look for work or to increase or improve their work. So that's where the workforce development kind of wraps in.
Great. Thank you. Alright, so first I have councilmember Smith, Kovar, and then Circe.
Thank you, Grace and Samira, for your comments. I think I'll lead off by saying, what is the number that I think would be appropriate for housing and business support? That number, and I'm going to give a range, would be anywhere from half a million to $750,000. This crisis is something, people are using this word a lot, but it is unprecedented. It is devastating people. Even those people that are able to work, they're putting themselves at this huge risk. They are not getting any type of hazard pay. And a lot of those people are getting sick. That's why you're seeing a lot of those numbers go up in French Georgia's county. Just because the numbers have not spiked here in Tacoma Park does not mean that it's not going to happen down the road. Things are not going to get back to normal unless we see a, a number of things put in place, whether it's a vaccine, whether it is mandatory social distancing, even if we do have restaurants still able to open. In Texas, they can only seat up to 25% capacity. If you only have 25% capacity in your restaurant, no one's making any money. So this problem is going to be with us for a very long time. And people are not going to be able to get assistance, I don't think, from the county level, maybe from the federal level, because the Democrats and Republicans continue to fight over whether or not there should be a CARES Act for. So we have to be the ones to fill this breach, to be there for our residents. I don't know if we're going to get reimbursements. Because everybody else, the states, the county, they're going to run major deficits in this situation. So we have to cowboy up. We got to be the ones that step up to help the people of Tacoma Park. And that has to be a big number. Workforce development, I think we might possibly be able to do that with the proposed $30,000. But regarding housing and support of our small businesses, we have to come up with a number we have never seen before.
So I'm sorry, I, I, councilmember Smith, so what would you like to add to the reconciliation list for?
Well, you, you asked for what was the number that we wanted?
Right.
So, I mean, I, I, I can't. I, I would like to say $300,000 for housing and $200,000 for support to small businesses.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to say is that, and I referred to this way back at the beginning of this discussion tonight, is that all of whatever we decide to provide in terms of assistance to residents and businesses and so on, it doesn't all have to come out of, on budget dollars right now. Number one, as I mentioned before, and I really want folks to think about this and several of the items that are, that were added here, and I understand most of the items that are added in these two sections are, in effect, more like placeholders than formal proposals that we have to consider for those amounts. But there are several on there that would be very logical to come out of the housing reserve. So that's the first thing. And that's also why I don't think it makes sense to put $100,000 into the housing reserve and then take it right back out. So I would recommend against any funding. I know we'll be talking about that shortly. But, you know, in terms of, for example, something like food insecurity, in normal times, that might be something that would flow through one of our grant programs. I've, I'm of the opinion that, you know, for the coming year, we ought to do everything we can to shift the focus of all of our grant programs into COVID-19 relief. But maybe it would make more sense to just take those grant programs and apply them directly to it and, and have us run them. You know, again, some entities had three-year, not necessarily commitments, but the potential for three-year projects with us. But this is, as Jared said, it's unprecedented. So I think we do need to provide at least several hundred thousand dollars for both categories of, of spending. But I think really a lot of that should come from, anything that's housing related should come from the housing reserve. I'd like to see some money channeled from, what would have gone to the grants. My concern about just shifting it so that all the grant money would flow directly to COVID relief, COVID-19 relief is we may not get to the grant cycle for a while in the upcoming fiscal year. So to the extent we want to have that money flow immediately, we maybe should have control of that ourselves for that purpose. And then we also have the 195,000 that we mentioned earlier that's available now, and that should be part of this as well. So I think if we take all those things together, to me, we can have something like $500,000 for COVID relief, but not that much of it would come out of the current budget. And then to the extent we have a lot of money in the hold category, then as the fiscal year goes on, we can use some of that if it looks like it's necessary.
So I, councilmember Kovar, I just want to make sure, because I'm trying to keep notes here. So in terms of, and I, I'm hearing you, that you would rather see for the support for residents, the money come from the housing reserve. The support to small businesses, is there any money you'd like to allocate in this?
I'm not saying none of it can come from the budget, but I'd like to see, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, like I said, come from the housing reserve. I'd like to see if we can shift some money out of the grants, maybe half of that, which would be 150,000. We have 195,000 and leftover FY20 funds. And then take all of that and a couple hundred thousand, if we needed to get up to 500,000 out of on budget, once we looked at all those other sources. So I think pull that all together. I hope that's not too complicated. I'm sorry.
Well, I guess I'm just saying, is that for just the resident support and small businesses?
Small business and, and residents in the city, yeah.
Alright.
Include housing-related assistance as well.
Alright. Councilwoman Dibala?
Thank you. The need, the need is so huge and all of these approaches are so worth doing. And there, there's, there's on some level no limit to what we could do if we had the staff and the resources. And I really value what the staff has done already to pivot existing programs to create new ones, to deal with the need right now. I agree with councilmember Smith that this is not going away anytime soon. So I feel like we need to pace ourselves. And so I'm thinking, as a practical matter, start with the $100,000 that we would normally have put into the housing reserve, the facade money that's not used for the matching grant. Then think about refocusing the community partnership program, some of the other things that have been mentioned. I'd like to know what, I would like to, to not have the tax rate go up. So I would like to know what the number is beyond that that we have achieved tonight and see if that is the payment.
Where right now, the cuts we made are 1,089,660, 1,089,660, which is 316,510 above the current rate. So.
Without the 125 for the housing reserve and the and the facade money.
Right, that, we haven't gotten to those yet. So that's prior to the, these categories.
Right. So through the land management discussion, reconciliation item?
Right.
You had, if you kept
You had, um, if you kept this current tax rate, you have an additional three hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars.
Okay. So I would, um, because it's late and I like round numbers, we could propose to do most or all of that in the two buckets. I would prefer one bucket because I, I right now don't have a good handle on what will the needs be in July, as opposed to now, for housing-related versus economic development-related, and as everybody has pointed out, they mesh very well together. But whether it's one bucket or two, I would propose for, um, for now, to say three hundred thousand dollars in the two.
For both.
Plus, and I think this works this way.
I just wanna clarify, um, when I spoke earlier, because this was separated into two different buckets, one was about supporting residents and the other was about support to small businesses. My colleague, uh, Grace Wiggins took the lead on support to residents because most of that work falls within her division. I have a small piece of that, which is workforce development. We have not spoken about the reality of our small businesses as of yet.
Yes, I am assuming that people, I am assuming that people remember what we talked about a couple weeks ago. That's why I didn't ask another question about that. Sorry.
Oh, no problem. I'm just clearing up that I'm still here in case someone wants to ask for the overview, what we've seen, et cetera, or ask any further questions about the information I provided.
Yeah, I, it, I didn't mean to short-circuit you. It's just getting late and I wanna get to the, to the so-called bottom line, um, 'cause we still have either tonight or Wednesday night to talk about the hold items, which potentially a, another sort of bucket in waiting, if you will, for whatever we don't know about yet.
Right, okay, thank you.
So, so that, so again, working with round numbers, I'm gonna suggest, um, for starters, to, uh, three hundred thousand in the two, and if I had a preference, um, right now, again, I'd rather, I'd rather not say, but if I had a preference right now, I, I think I agree with Councilmember Jared, um, with Councilmember Smith, more in housing, a little more in housing and a little less in business.
Okay, thank you. Ari, um, Councilwoman Circe?
Thank you. Uh, so City Manager quote question, um, that estimate that you have in terms of where we are with the current level of, of funding, does that include the hold items?
No. So, so the, the hold items have not been, you know, to me, they're in the budget, whether you say that they go into the unassigned, that, that amount goes into the unassigned reserve, or you wanna discuss it later. Um, I'm just talking about the items that you cut tonight.
Okay, so we've cut right now one million. Can you give me that number one more time?
The mayor has that number, I just have the difference.
I gotta get to that part of my spreadsheet. One million eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty.
So it's, so, Miss Circe, it's, it's three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and ten over the seven, seven, three, one, fifty, which is the difference between my proposed tax rate and the current tax rate. So, um, so essentially, if you're trying to keep, and not all are, I appreciate that, but if you're trying to keep the current tax rate, then there's your, a three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars that have not been spent, that could go into the unassigned reserve, or they could go to one of these categories.
Okay, perfect. Um, so I've asked all those questions, and I'm, I don't plan to take it all into consideration as I give you my numbers. Um, so I had started to flush through at least my spreadsheet, and I haven't had a chance to kind of reconcile. Um, but I'm showing, um, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars towards, uh, for housing and residence. Three hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred and five to businesses. I know it seems like a random amount, but right now I had done math to help me keep tally, and that's, that's where I was. Um, and so with those totals, in addition to, um, what we talked about earlier in terms of, um, spending FY twenty monies in FY twenty, that at least would give us total about, um, over six hundred thousand dollars between the FY twenty-one money and what was in FY twenty. So that would give a, a, quite a bit of money. Um, I completely appreciate, um, the, uh, allowing staff flexibility, because I know this is a very fluid situation. Um, and Mayor, there are some corrections on my list, and if it's okay, I, I would like to go ahead and run through those. I mean, I'm sure everyone wants to go to bed. And if I can eliminate some things on the list, I think that, that might help us all. Um, so if you scroll down, so that COVID revenue loss set aside, unassigned reserve increase, I wanna withdraw that.
Okay.
Okay, um, and I think all of the other items, we're not paying attention to the amounts, correct? So like the additional property tax assistance, I don't know what I was, I, I don't even know what that is. But if that's all wrapped under the Support for Residents, you can consider that as part of the totals that I'm proposing. Um, also, I do, I know there's been discussion about the grants program, and I do want to stress that right now, um, some of the entities that are actually providing um, direct food services to residents in need are nonprofits. Um, like Small, Small Things Matter, um, Advanced Community Services, like they're small nonprofits um, that are coming into bu- buildings and delivering actual food stuff. So I want to, I was, you know, I suggested the Community Grants Program, just because it's something we already have established. I think it's important for us two to think about as we're trying to ramp up with this level of money. It is often easier to throw money towards something you already have established than to establish something new. So trying to just offer suggestions on ways um, that staff might be able to reach those priorities, but I, I think we have wonderful, talented staff who are very creative and innovative and can figure out ways to, to meet the needs um, with, without much of my help. So, um, again, just to reiterate, two hundred and twenty-five K towards, um, Resident Services, two hundred and five K towards, um, businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry, I was just doing some math. Um, sorry. Keys to paper math. Um, so I guess one of the things that, um, I wanna, um, maybe put on the table and ask folks as we're doing this, we do have in the current budget a hundred thousand dollars toward, putting towards the Housing Reserve, which isn't yet allocated. So this is the, in addition for this budget year, and the, um, twenty-five thousand dollars in the neighborhood commercial, um, development. Just to make life ea- a little bit easier as we're looking at these, um, numbers, I'd like to propose that, um, and if anyone has objections, let me know, that we take the a hundred thousand dollars that was going to be put in the reserves, and we free it up for this conversation of what we're allocating to the Support for Residents, and we do the same for the twenty-five thousand dollars. Because if we do that, then we actually have four hundred and forty-one dollars, and four, four hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and ten to be thinking about how we wanna allocate it among, um, and that, that gets really close, Councilwoman, um, Circe, to the numbers you were thinking, and, um, if we include the, um, amount we're not carrying over this year in Councilmember Smith's numbers, it actually gets us close to the range people were thinking of. So I don't know if that is amenable to folks, or I'll just put that on the table for a second, um, let you think about it.
Could you, could you say that again about the money allocated from this year to next year? You lost me there.
Oh, I was just trying to say that, um, Councilmember Smith had a fi- a total of five hundred thousand, and, you know, that would actually necessitate us to po- potentially raise the, um, the tax rate this year. So I was saying, though, if you took into account the other money we already talked about earlier tonight.
The one seventy-one for this, I mean. Okay, now I'm with you, thank you.
That gets us closer, so. I don't know, Councilwoman Circe, if I could go back to you, as you were doing your calculations, does moving over the hundred thousand dollars that was, that was proposed to take out of the, not to put into the Housing Reserve and the twenty-five into your calculations, make sense, or were you thinking something else?
No, that, that makes sense for me. I mean, I will be honest, I haven't, um, updated my spreadsheets to, to fully get everything, but, um, that sounds about right. Um, because I didn't keep track of all of the things along the way that we, we kind of kept in that I had initially taken out. So, no, that works for me. And I, I think that difference does make up for, like, a couple of things, like, that I had at a higher cost than some other folks, so it, it balances out.
Great, okay. Um, Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, you know, first of all, I'd like to thank staff, especially Grace Wiggins and Samira for Cook Gaines, it is, Samira Cook Gaines. Like to thank, uh, the staff for all of their great work so far under the, uh, the, not just the work restrictions, but also this extra burden and challenge that's been put on staff uh, with the, uh, pandemic. You know, they've really been doing a great job in addressing some of these issues that we're talking about tonight. Uh, right off the top, I can say that, uh, and I think it, it sounds like everyone's agreed to this, that, uh, that we are going to, at a maximum, stay at the tax rate that we had for this year. And I think that's, uh, that's huge, you wanna do that. And so the rest of the things that I'm talking about, if there's anything I say that's, uh, that's not funded by the money we already have on the table, uh, we need to find it somewhere else so that we keep that tax rate, um, at this year's rate. Now, um, the, uh, yeah, I think it's, it's presumptuous of us to try to say how this money's gonna be spent, even breaking it down by uh, businesses and individuals, because there's so many things that we don't know about where the need's gonna be. Uh, you know, we talked about food, housing issues, uh, you know, rental housing issues, homeowner issues, uh, workforce development, uh, but, you know, daycare may become a huge issue, you know, as this thing plays out. And we don't know what else may be, uh, the big issues, so I'm in favor of, um, not discussing that all tonight and deciding we should put so much in this spot and so much in this spot. I think we should agree on a budget figure and, uh, let us use our great wisdom in the future on deciding how we divide that money up. And hopefully that would help us get out of here a little earlier, earlier tonight. Uh, as far as how much money, I think it's gonna be, the limiting factor is what can we come up with, because as you look at each of these issues that have been discussed tonight, we're gonna need a whole lot of money, and we're not gonna be able to provide as much help as the community's gonna need. We're gonna have to, uh, just do the best that we can. So, um, you know, it sounds like right now, with the numbers that are on the table, I would say five hundred thousand. I agree with, uh, Councilmember Smith when he said, well, seven hundred and fifty thousand would be nice. It's just what all can we come up with? Uh, yeah, ship the housing, uh, fund over there. You know, the, the money we were gonna put into that, and, uh, you know, let's go back through the, uh, the budget and see if there's any of these other things that we've thought about, or something else where we can pick up some more money and bring that to, uh, the maximum we can while keeping the tax rate at, uh, the same as this year's rate. So I don't know if I answered your questions, but, uh, pick them out of there somewhere, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kostick?
Thank you. Uh, the benefit of going later in this conversation is, uh, most of it has already been said. Um, and I don't need to belabor it since it's almost midnight. Um, I think that, um, we, as others have said, need to ensure that we're spending a good amount of money on this as much as we can. And I think the proposal to, um, utilize the, uh, four forty-one makes a lot of sense. Uh, and for me, I would prefer to do a lump sum that is not divided up with some of that to residents, some to businesses, but to hear a proposal from staff in terms of what the best allocation of those funds are. I also would be interested in exploring further additions, um, additional uses from the Housing Reserve. Um, and I think, um, one of the things that we need to do and continue to do, um, is to be, uh, be sure that we have an adequate reserve, which is something that, you know, is a factor as well when we're thinking about, uh, whether we're going to spend the, uh, the four forty-one that we have, that's a difference here between, um, the tax rate and, um, what, where we're at right now with the budget, or if we are going to put that towards reserves. And, um, I have a lot of concern about our level of reserve. I would like to put a, a lot of the items that we've discussed, um, on the hold list, I'd like to put those into a reserve bucket to hold off, so we do have some padding there. But to me, it makes sense to ensure that we're funding, uh, these really critical costs that we need to be, um, need to be spending in order to support residents and businesses right now.
Great, thank you. Um, listening to my colleagues, um, um, I'd like to put a proposal on the table for this, um, and to say that we create a COVID nineteen fund, um, in which we don't try and allocate any of these, um, different subcategories, but that we, um, have four hundred and thirty thousand towards that, um, which would include repurposing what is, um, allocated now to the Housing Reserve and the, um, Neighborhood Commercial Development. Um, and then we put the, um, just to make round figures, about ten thousand, um, into reserves to finish out our reconciliation list, um, this evening. Um, so that's again, combining these even further, um, and having staff come back to us with a proposal when they have a better understanding of, uh, what, how the money should be divided, but to allocate four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, and then, um, the last ten thousand dollars in reserves. Kinda wanna put that on the table. Um, Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Um, so if I understand correctly, I've been madly doing math here too, and I think you've now done it as well, so I think I understand what it is. So basically, what you were saying was to take the earlier figure we had, which produced in effect, three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of, uh, additional funds that weren't allocated anywhere yet, and then you added to that the hundred thousand, uh, that would have otherwise gone to the Reserve and the twenty-five thousand for the remainder of the unmatched portion of the, um, facade work, right? So that, that's what got you to the quote-unquote surplus of the four forty-one. I just wanna make sure I'm following the math. That's how, uh, what I had done on my sheet there too. So what I would, uh, propose then as an alternative, and I understand how the winds are blowing around here, but, um, if we took the four forty-one, and subtracted two hundred and sixty-five from it, we would get the constant yield, and then we'd have about a hundred and seventy-five left over. We use two hundred, as I said, from, uh, the Housing Reserve and shift a hundred and twenty-five out of the Community Grants, and we would have five hundred thousand dollars. So that would be my alternative proposal, which would produce five hundred thousand dollars and a slightly lower tax rate.
Okay. Um, Councilwoman Dabala?
Yeah, I wanna come back for just a minute, um, recognizing that the need is pretty huge. Um, but also to what the staff originally recommended, and, um, to what the staff capacity is gonna be. But also to what the staff originally recommended and to what the staff capacity is going to be to do all this. And I, at one point I had written down 345,000, 225 for economic development and 120 for housing. And so I agree, one bucket, not two. But my, I, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with putting a lot more than the number staff recommended. And right now we are talking about quite a bit more than what the staff recommended. And what I would prefer would be do what the staff recommended for now, ask for the for the, the strategic thinking and what the needs are in July, and then consider putting more into it at that point.
What, what was the number you had? Sorry, I didn't.
And, you know, it's late. I might not be doing the math right, but I think it was 345,000 between the two. And so I would, if, so yeah, someone will tell me whether the number is right. But, but, but the idea is put the rest of that into the reserves. And when we get to a better understanding of what the needs are in July, then again, we're probably going to have to do this again three months after that, to then consider putting more in.
Okay.
If I might, if, if I might, I appreciate that much. I just, I do want to note that the, that that was just two members of staff making a response to a council question. And there's not really been a staff discussion across departments and, and even with me. So as we go forward, I, you know, I'm very interested in having a, a full staff conversation and a recommendation forward. Whatever comes up, you know, these are things that can be moved around as we find out more information. They can go into the reserve. They can come out of the reserve as you, they can, they can go to this bucket or that bucket. Always keeping concern about these levels for all the different aspects, but they are movable through budget amendments as the year proceeds.
Thank you.
My concern is once we, if we say tonight that we're going to budget a very large amount of money and no, nothing into reserves now, it's going to be to me, it's easier to take it, to, to move it in than it is going to be to take it out later.
I got you. Councilwoman Circe.
Thanks. So I, I do want to say a couple of quick points. One is about the community grants program. I know one, Councilmember Kovar raised the possibility of reducing the funds there. I, I would highly advise against that. The community grants program can actually also become a vehicle for us to fund some of our smaller kind of homegrown kind of groups and nonprofits. I mean, I'm expecting for there to be quite a bit of draw, of, of, of less monies available for these types. And I'm also considering like artists and some of our businesses that provide different types of services. So I definitely would encourage us not to get rid of that program, because I think it's going to be something that's going to be really helpful for us. We're seeing in Georgia as things are opening back up. There are a lot of people and there are a lot of funding that is drawing up as businesses are opening. There are a lot of jobs that are being lost. There are a lot of revenue streams that are being drawn up. And so having something like a community grants program gives us a ve- another vehicle to, to fund different groups within our community that we want to make sure are able to be sustained. So I, I do want to stress that point. Another thing for consideration, I'm perfectly fine, and I actually like the idea of a COVID fund. I think that makes sense. In terms of reserve versus not reserve, I do want to stress to my colleagues, based on some of the analysis that I've done in terms of our budget and what our actuals are, our staff are very fiscally conservative. Almost to a fault. So, you know, our budgets do tend to show very high rates, but our actuals do not match that. So I do think that it's important for us to communicate to staff to be fiscally conservative. But I will say that the track record has been to be fiscally conservative. So whether we put it in the reserves or put it in the general fund, you know, I think the biggest thing for us is just making sure that we're getting regular updates from the city manager in terms of how those funds are being drawn down and what's being done with them. I think that's more the most important in terms of, you know, making sure we have a full grasp of what's happening versus, you know, the shell game of the moving the monies back and forth between the reserves and the general fund. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Smith.
I would like to echo Councilman, Councilmember Circe regarding community grants. I think that is an important resource for different organizations in our community. And I think it's going to become even more valuable as we go along with COVID-19 recovery. I will support having the COVID fund. I think that's a good idea. I think I even mentioned that before we first started this discussion. But I do think we should have $500,000 as the number for the COVID fund. I think that'd be a good psychological point for residents. It's a big number. And that will tell residents that we really take this seriously, that we care, and that we are going to try to help as many people as possible.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostic.
I just wanted to make the point that I like, I particularly like the idea of a COVID fund. In part because I think it also allows us to recognize, since we were talking about reserves before, to recognize that if there is some type of emergency, that this is a COVID fund, we may need to use for other emergency purposes related to COVID, whether it's related to the city budget itself or something else. And that's certainly not the intention for the funds. But if some of them down the line need to be utilized because we're facing an emergency situation related to city funds, that, that that allows for that. And it's sort of an additional, additional opportunity to recognize the impact that COVID is having on the community. Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Kovar has one more thing to say.
Sorry to circle back one more time. There were just a couple of things I meant to say. One, I am saying that all of our grant programs or as much of them as we can should be required to be focused on COVID-19 relief. And I think I'd like to have that be part of the budget. And if people don't want to shift 100,000 out of that, it could come from either, also under my proposal, either the housing reserve or we haven't even really accounted for the extra 195,000 that we're talking about from FY20. So that's one point I'd make. Just two other things. A big part of, I think, what we're going to need to do for the, for the housing, to determine what's needed in the hap- in the housing programs and the housing response is to, number one, hear more from the staff about it, which I look forward to from Grace and others, but also very likely to do a lot of outreach to some of the apartment buildings, including some of the smaller ones to see what they want. So I envision some of the money being used for that. Last thing I'd like to suggest, I don't know if that would go in the budget, if this would go in the budget or not, but I think it would be really helpful to have a, some sort of appointed committee of residents and business people and apartment building tenants and maybe owners, some sort of residence commission, as we often have, to help advise us on what some of the needs are, because I think one of the biggest challenges is going to be, I mean, our staff are amazing, but there's only so much that individuals can do. And I know they're mostly working much longer hours. So I'd like to also, I don't think there'd be a big cost to it, but I'd like to put out there the idea of there being a committee of some kind that could help us understand what the needs are by having representatives from the various communities and sectors of companies in the commercial world and so on that we have.
Okay, Councilwoman Kostic and Dibala, are you, do you still have more to say or those old hands?
I do have a quick thing. Go ahead, Councilmember Dibala.
Well, it might be, it might be the same thing you're going to say. Were you, were you actually proposing that the COVID fund have a third potential use of other programs as well, as opposed to trying to cut some of it out and put it into reserves?
I guess my proposal is that we dedicate it specifically towards the immediate needs of residents focused on housing and small businesses. But to my mind, it is a fund that is essentially available as well in the sense that not all of those funds are going to be utilized in one fell swoop. It's something that is going to be doled out throughout the, you know, throughout the emergency. So I would anticipate, just for my own thinking, maybe more than anything else, that that is, those are funds that also may need to be utilized, like any of our funds, if there is some type of larger impact on the budget. But what I was going to suggest was that in keeping with the idea of the COVID fund, that we also allocate the 171 from this year that we are utilizing for similar purposes, essentially to the start of a COVID fund that's been funded in 2020, 2021.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. That, that's what I was trying to get to before, when I was saying to get to Councilmember Smith's 500 number, because I would like to keep the tax rate this, as Councilmember Siemens said, at the rate we have now. And so, all right, so I'm going to tell you what I have as my notes as the four proposals that are on the table now. I think there is general agreement to create a COVID-19 fund. And the, well, I guess the first proposal by Councilmember Kovar is to use money from grants programs and housing reserve and to take the remaining money that we have and get us down to the constant yield.
One correction, what I just said most recently, and I apologize if it wasn't clear, was instead of taking it from the grants program, just take it from the 195, the leftover in FY20 funds. So it would be.
Right, but that doesn't, okay. But that doesn't impact our, but basically what your proposal is, we reallocate housing reserve money, which doesn't impact this. And we use the, the, the money that we, the difference we have, you want to get down to constant yield. So, so that's your proposal. So Councilmember Kovar's proposal is to use the funds to get down to constant yield and to, when we create the COVID-19 fund, to use the money from the housing reserve. Councilwoman Dibala would like to use 345,000 and put the rest in reserves. To make life simpler, I'm just going to say I, of the remaining money we have of the 441,000, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest we put 440 in the COVID fund. And then Councilmember Smith, which will, that will keep us at the current tax rate. And Councilmember Smith is suggesting $500,000 in the COVID fund. So any questions on the four options that are on the table right now?
I want to get clear on where the $100,000 for the housing reserve fund is in these options. Is it in all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
We're not, what we said before is we are not dedicating specifically the $100,000 to the housing reserve. Rather, we're kind of put it in this pool of money right now.
Great, thank you. That's what I thought, just clarifying.
Good clarification. Okay, so just to reiterate, Councilmember Kovar wants to use the funds that we now have to get to constant yield as a tax rate and use the housing reserve fund to create the COVID-19 fund. Councilwoman Dibala is at 345, and the, any leftover funds go into the reserves.
From the tax, to keep the tax rate level, yes.
Yes, thank you, to keep the current tax rate. I'm also proposing to keep the current tax rate, but to put all the funding, the 440 into a COVID-19 fund. And Councilmember Smith is proposing 500,000 in a COVID-19 fund, which will, tiny smidge of, over the tax rate then. So would the clerk do call, I guess we could just say Councilmember Kovar, Dibala, Mayor, or Councilmember Smith? We want to pick one.
Are we doing one by one?
I guess we could do them one by one, okay.
I'll go first.
Sure. I mean, I kind of did them in ascending order, so.
Let's do them that way, then we.
All right, that'll be, okay. So awesome. All right. The clerk, want to do it that way?
So for Councilmember Kovar's proposal, Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dibala?
No.
Councilmember Kostic?
No.
Councilmember Siemens?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Circe?
No.
No. Mayor Stewart?
Yeah, do you want to do Councilwoman Dibala's next?
Okay, Council.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, you're.
No, okay.
I was on to the next thing, no, sorry.
Okay, and I see them as in ascending order so that if he, if, if folks vote for the level that I'm suggesting, they could then, I'm asking, could they then, then vote again, yes, for a higher number? Do it that way?
I guess so, yeah.
No, I'm already confused.
I'm going to vote for the one I want.
Vote for at least what I've got, then, then vote again to raise it higher, to raise it higher, if that's.
Okay.
Each one stands by itself.
So, so this is Councilmember Dibala's proposal. Councilmember Kovar?
Yep.
Uh, Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
I support the 440, but I would also support 345 if we don't get to 440.
Councilmember Siemens?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Circe?
No.
All right, Mayor Stewart?
I have no idea. I didn't keep track.
Yeah, so it's three and three.
Lost.
It's three and three.
It's, yeah.
All right, but I want to go to the next category. So what do I have to vote for?
Say no now.
Just say no.
Say no, all right, I'm saying no.
Okay, I, I, I meant that, I meant the other way around, but whatever.
All right, let's move on. The 440 is on the table.
Okay. All right, so for the 440, so this is the mayor's proposal. Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dibala?
No.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Circe?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
So then you want to look at the 500? Next, all right. Councilmember Kovar?
Where's the money coming from for this one? Sorry.
It would, I, I, I think we have right now 441,510. So it, whatever the difference would be, would be an increase in the tax rate.
Okay, I'll vote no.
Councilmember Dibala?
No.
Councilmember Kostic?
No.
Councilmember Siemens?
Decisive no.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
No.
No. Mayor Stewart?
No. All right, so.
500,000, but not the increase in tax rate.
All right, so.
But it's only pennies. I mean, it's not like a major increase.
Well, but we can find the difference this week and, and come up with that other money for a different cut in the tax and make it happen next week. And, and drive Susie crazy.
I think our goal, I think our, the staff has heard clearly from, from us that our, the majority of the council would like to keep the tax rate at the current rate. the majority of the council would like to keep the tax rate at the current rate and maximize the funding that we can for the COVID-19 fund. At the moment, at 12:15 on um, May 5th, it seems like that is at 440,000. Um, but again, as, as people are cleaning this up and moving it forward, um, if there is additional um, money or other things that they find, we can have that.
And that could include the 195,000 in FY20 funds also.
Right, I think it was Councilwoman Kostik who said before, we are starting the COVID fund now. So um, if we count the close to $200,000 we have this year plus putting in the 440 for next year, we are, we're, yeah.
And Mayor, excuse me, you know, how much money do we give to um, some emergency relief now that we put out in a grant? And we could uh, bring that money in-house to, so that we can target it specifically how we want it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I, I, again, I leave that to the staff to-
And so will we, we will see uh, s- some uh, proposal from the staff to how to do this at some point?
Yes, at some point, it won't be too long, but I know for me, I need to take a day off.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not saying-
But, but uh, but very shortly, I know we have a lot of, we've been doing a lot of thinking about this. Uh, and we, and so we will have something back to you, I just don't know exactly when.
Yes, and I, and if anyone wants a more of an explanation for why I'm not, why I'm not comfortable with going with the full amount right now, um, just let me, just call me. I, it's just, it's just a concern about making sure that we target the funds and, and design the programs in a way that's the most useful.
I, so I, I just, I want to-
Plead anybody else's.
Right, I just want to note that it's, it's getting late and I just wanted to, we have one more thing.
What?
We have to go down the hold items and see if there is agreement on holding these or if we missed anything. Okay, and I'm not sure if my list that I've been keeping is very up to date. Um, so for example, let's just go down the list and clean it up. ADA sidewalk funds, half a million, road resurfacing, half a million. The neighborhood commu- take out the neighborhood community um, improvements, because we just dealt with that back in the um, in the conversation we just had. We are keeping in the budget, the bike facility and the bus shelters. Um, yeah, so those two stay in, because we said we were keeping those in the budget, so they're not on hold.
Mayor, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, I thought we talked about, I thought we voted on the road resurfacing.
Oh, did we, I'm sorry.
Voted on-
No, I don't think we voted on, on the road resurfacing, did, but, but you're right, we did vote on something.
Um, road resurf- r- road resurfacing, we did um-
Minus 50.
Minus 50.
Minus 50.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman, yikes.
Yeah, so that should be off the list.
Yeah, so it's 450.
Yep.
Thank you. Good memory from hours ago. Um, let's see, what happens to pu- public art?
Took public art off.
Off?
Public art gets, that 25,000 gets off. The public land management, we kept 15.
15, yeah.
And so you take the 30 off of here. We already took out the 4,000 for the plaques, so we can take that out.
Did we put the tree inventory on hold? I have a note that we did, but I don't know if that's true.
Yeah, yeah, um, Jessica has it down there, the 30,000. For that, so that's there. Okay. Am I missing anything else? So if we could just, if people could look at this list, um, and again, thi- this is money that um, and the city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, um, will go into our um, unassigned reserves and we will keep this list, um, or whatever the final list ends up being. And then we will revisit it at um, at least quarterly, if not more so, um, regarding work to be done. Um,
Right, and, and I, are, you're gonna go through these, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna go through these, so, um, so first are the um, ADA sidewalk funds for $500,000. Do people want to keep this on the hold list?
Yes.
Are we doing votes or s-
We should do votes just to, yes, why don't we?
Okay, ADA sidewalk funds, Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Um, remind me whether we, we voted on whether to cut this as, and we, and we didn't cut it. And we, and, but we want to put the entire amount on hold as opposed to part of it.
Yeah, that's what's being proposed right now.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik?
Uh, my vote is yes, but I do just want to note that I really, this is one of the items here that I really do want to make sure we get back to and consider soon after um, the first or second quarter.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
Yeah. Councilmember Siemens?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe? Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Alright, so the, the ADA sidewalk funds on hold. Next, road resurfacing.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
I think yes. I, can I, can I just confirm one thing about what we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay, so is everything that is in, on the hold list items that we have agreed, we will pay for to some degree? I think I'm getting a little confused, because like, road resurfacing, we voted to cut to keep in the budget. So are we saying now we're wait, we're asking to hold off on spending these funds until we are okay with it?
Yes, it's in the budget.
That's the concept of the hold list, that, that basically it's on the list to do, but it, the council would need to hear about how things are going o- over the first quarter or second quarter, and then could make a decision about whether to proceed or not.
But technically, as I understand it, um, um, this law though, right, um, the monies are being put in the unassigned reserve. And so among the options are to use it for the intended purpose, which is what's listed here, use it for COVID-19 relief, to leave it in the reserves, or some combination of those three things, would you say that's a-
It can, if it's in the unassigned reserve, it can be used for any purpose. Um, what this list does is give a cheat sheet for staff and council about what to go forward, what to look at as you go through the budget.
I also thought I heard, I also thought I heard earlier that in the ordinance, the budget ordinance, we would have these categories.
That's up to you, but that makes a lot of sense, I hope you do that.
As opposed to generally released into the unassigned reserve.
Hmm.
Okay, alright, so I think Jesse worked, worked with me, so it's my turn to vote, right?
That's right.
Okay, so, yes.
So, alright, Mayor Stewart?
Um, yes.
Yeah, so, should we continue to go down individually these? Okay. So the hold on vacant permanent positions, Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Dibala?
I'm, I'm sorry, I thought this was the money that we already cut.
That's the other part.
And that's, this is half.
Two points.
This is the other half.
Other half.
Right.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik?
Uh, yes, but I have a que- well, I'll hold off on my question, yes, go ahead.
Councilmember Siemens?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik? I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Circe?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm here, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm trying, I'm trying. Okay, so basically, we're talking about a full freeze. So, so when would, um, how often are we planning to review this hold, this hold list?
We have to decide that still.
So, it, I mean, there's, there certainly are, we have, we're required to give quarterly financial reports, so at the minimum quarterly.
Okay. Okay. Alright.
I'm, I'm also under the impression that the 270 plus the 270 is not the full million.
That's right.
All, so it's not a complete freeze.
That's correct, there are some positions that are to go forward, or that I have options to discuss about going-
E- options to discuss, even if we put this on hold, it's still not the entire-
The entire amount.
Not the entire amount.
Just clarifying, that I got that right.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to spend some time going back through my list, but yes, it's not the whole thing.
Alright, so, I will vote yes.
Okay, and Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Alright, so now we have the holds on interns, the 50,000. Uh, Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Dibala?
No.
Councilmember Kost-
Hold it, hold it, is this the same hold that was on the list that we agreed to earlier? With an additional-
This is the same, this is the same as the, it, this is the same as with the hold on vacant permanent positions, it's the same-
So this is an additional 50,000?
Correct.
No.
Okay, so you're no?
No.
Say, okay, Councilmember Kostik?
Does this include the sustainability intern? I thought it did not.
It does not, it's not.
Yes.
Councilmember uh, Siemens?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Right. So then we have uh, no contribution to the ERR. Of 600,000. For a moment?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it is in the, it is in our charter that we have a contrib- annual contributions to the ERR, and there's a minimum amount, this is over that minimum amount, but it's still, is less than the um, calculated required amount. I feel really strongly that this is something that, uh, for the health of our reserves, and many people have spoken to the concept of the healthy reserves, that we need to ha- put in this contribution of the 600,000. And I don't think that it's, I don't think that it works right to put it on a hold list.
What is the minimum required?
I'd have to go back and, there's a specification in the charter.
Thank you.
It says, what, the material that you provide says 25% of the total budget revenues. Uh, no, that's, that's-
That's a different one.
Yeah, that's different, um.
So I, I, on this one, I, I really, I, I feel very strongly that this is something that should go forward and, and I would, so I urge you to-
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say, since I was the one to put it forward, and I appreciate knowing of your concerns, and, and I don't dismiss them lightly. Um, again, this is, the proposal is that it be put on hold, the proposal is not that it be cut. And so, we can, we can decide to fund it on July 2nd, or we can decide to fund it in October or November, or whenever, once we get a sense for what's happening uh, in terms of the path of the pandemic, the potential further, uh, the potential drop-offs in funding from other levels of government and the needs that continue to emerge within the community. So again, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm saying, let's wait. And I'll stop there.
If I may, uh, I, this is Carrie, I would just uh, say that I uh, understand Councilmember Kovar's position, I think though that if we need money um, later in the year, that uh, we will be better suited to find the money somewhere else. And um, so I just want to let my colleagues know that I will be voting against this.
Alright, Jesse, you want to call it?
Call the vote, okay. Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
No.
Councilmember Kostik?
No.
Councilmember Siemens?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Circe?
No.
Mayor Stewart?
No.
Alright, um, Mayor Stewart, just, just so I want to say something about the next item?
Uh, it's Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes. I would like to say that, that most of the discussion up until now has been about vacant positions. This is about the, in, putting on hold the, some portion of the increases in proposed, in a budget that was done before COVID hit and before the, the economic situation changed, um, to put on hold some portion of the pers- personnel-related costs increases for um, existing staff. And that is, that category is very broad, it is way more than wages and, and um, and immediate, indirect benefits, and I think um, a, a small portion of the proposed overall increases on hold would, would be very appropriate at this point. We will know more in three months, we will know more in six months. Um, and out of an abundance of caution and a respect for the staff uh, that we have to pr- in some ways to protect them, um, I'm proposing this.
If I may speak uh, to that, the um, the wages, the wage increases that were um, kind of put into the, into the base budget are all on hold. Um, and they wouldn't become, uh, they would not come off hold until there are union negotiations and discussions with council, so essentially, all of the increase is on hold. So it's, it's a little awkward to put that number, I appreciate and understand the sensitivity and the concern that the council members and residents have about seeing those numbers. But at this moment, um, they are on hold until there's union negotiations and the council um, acts.
But we don't want to put that entire number on the hold list.
It's, it's actu- it doesn't have to be on a hold list, but it is actually on hold.
And is it a council decision to release it on, from being on hold?
Yes, it's a coun- the, there is not, yes, absolutely. The entire amount is a council decision.
Any, alright, so Jesse, you want to call the?
Okay, Councilmember Kovar?
Excuse me, aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Um, aye.
Uh, Councilmember Kostik?
No, because I, I think as the city manager said, this is something that basically is on hold anyway.
Councilmember Siemens?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
No.
Mayor Stewart?
No.
Uh, Council-
Councilwoman Dibala too?
Dibala.
Um, and again, in the abund- in an abundance of caution, a per- a, a, a small portion of the increase in general, uh, non-personnel operating costs, we've talked about specific items on the, we, on the reda- on the cut list. Um, this is a, an overall potential reduction if we need it in operating costs. Um, and like the previous one, it's out of an abundance of caution.
I appreciate that, on this one, I don't know how to do that, so um, for any, would, why would you be expecting me to draw up a list? would you be expecting me to draw up a list of $150,000 worth of operating items that I choose and say these are on hold until you release them? Because many of these things are like, you know, by paper, or that kind of thing. So just curious, I just don't know how that operationalizes.
I wasn't thinking about it as such a fine grain of 15 paper clips in one department versus five boxes of paper in another. I was thinking about more, leaving it to your discretion, but I was thinking at a higher level, department by department, or something like that. Percentages as opposed to specific items.
So, so I would, so perhaps what this is, is, somebody spoke to this earlier, that we're very frugal, but assuming that we are approaching the point where we're in the last $150,000 of non-COVID-related non-personnel items, then if there were something else, then I would come to council.
I was thinking of it in the way the others are, in the other way around.
Sorry, I'm totally confused. I just don't, I just, I just, I appreciate that the goal here is to not spend all of the money that are non-personnel operating costs that are in the budget.
So how would you, what would work? In a practical sense, then? If that's the goal, how, to say that we want to hold some of that back, what would be the best way to operationalize that?
To me, I think it's a, it's a a discussion with council during each quarterly financial report about how we're doing on these various items. And to me, I'd prefer that you not have it on a hold list, but it just be a regular part of the conversation that says, you know, I think we shouldn't be spending, I think we need to not spend as much, we're having these issues. It's, the only other way I can think about this is to actually go through and identify a certain amount of money, and a certain, I, I mean, I think that the only way that this works is if I actually itemize $150,000 worth of non-personnel operating costs that aren't COVID-related. I just find that, I,
Well, that, that is not a great use of your time. So I was not thinking about it in that way.
But I certainly, I certainly appreciate, we're trying to be as tight as possible, and particularly now with fewer staff, we're going to, those numbers will probably come down as it is.
So for both this and the personnel-related costs, perhaps in the ordinance, there could be some general statement about the quarterly check-ins? Or some, some way to get a handle on it so that it's clear that we are aware that these are areas that, that if we need to go there, we can, and we're keeping track of it in a way that we normally, in a much, in a tighter way than would be a typical year.
Okay, this gets taken off?
Does anybody else have a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were taking it off.
So is this something you want to vote on?
Or were you removing it, Councilwoman Dibala? Sorry.
I was suggesting an alternative. I was wondering if anybody else felt strongly one way or the other. I had not taken it off, I wanted to see.
I appreciate the effort, but I, it doesn't, it sounds like it's going to be difficult to do.
So the ordinance idea is a better way to get at it, okay. All right, then I would like to work on some ordinance language on this one and on the other one, and see what people think.
What's the other one?
The personnel.
We know, we voted the personnel one down.
Both of these, she can bring anything back at another time.
Yeah, but you're saying like?
We take that off the list now, and if she comes up with another idea, we can do that.
True, very true.
Okay.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. The next item was a hold on vacant or new permanent positions, Councilmember Kovar.
Well, I thought we did this.
This is in addition to the money that the?
In addition to the 270, right, so?
Okay, thank you.
Just to be clear, and I really appreciate all the work that the city manager did to lay out for us a proposal on, among the both new and unfilled, currently unfilled positions, those that she thought should be prioritized, those that could be split half and half, which we already talked about, and those that could be allowed to disappear. And in the main category of new or vacant positions that were more high priority, the total of paying benefits is about $500,000. And so what I'm proposing is that still, say two of those four could go forward, but that the other two wouldn't. And I'm not the one to pick which one they are. That would be left up to the city manager. But again, these are being put on hold, they're not being stopped. And so it's, we're not stopping any of those. We're just saying prioritize the two of the four that are most important, and then we'll assess on the other two and make that decision later in the year. That's what this is about.
Okay. Does the clerk want to call it?
I'm afraid I'm still not clear, I apologize. So the first 270 was proposed by the city manager, and then we just approved another 270. And out of, this is out of a total of about a million for vacant positions, new positions, plus fringe. So is this the difference to take us all the way to the top?
No. No. If you look at the material that the city manager prepared, there were, in the initial block of it, there were four high priority positions, and the total paying compensation is about $500,000. And I'm suggesting that that be, you know, more or less reduced by half, and that, but the amount that I'm proposing be reduced, again, is not being cut, so it's just being put on hold so we can assess the situation, and then decide on the priorities over the course of the fiscal year.
So this is Toshia, I mean, one of the things that I'm trying to be mindful of is what was proposed previously. So what is actually on our reconciliation list and the cost reductions there? What is already on the hold list, which is about another, what is this? 320K that we've already voted on? So another 300K on top of that goes, quite frankly, well over a hiring, like that might, like those cuts may be well over a hiring freeze cost allocation, if you were to add what was on the reconciliation and that amount to what's currently on the hold. So I do want us to be mindful of the fact that if there are specific positions that we agree that the city manager has proposed as priority, that we want to make sure she has the ability to hire, then we need to provide that flexibility for her to start recruitment without having to necessarily come to the council for those priority positions. So I would just argue that this additional 300 eliminates the ability for her to do that.
But it doesn't, it doesn't because the 300 is out of 500, so she still has 200,000 plus a little bit more.
No, it doesn't, because we already have on the list 270. So there's already a $270,000 hold. We have hold on interns at 50K. You're adding another 300K to that. So are you saying that you're trying to, instead of saying the 270K hold, you want it to be 300? Are you including the interns as a part of that, new or permanent?
If you look at the material that the city manager prepared, there's one section, the four positions at just under 500,000. There was another section at about six positions or so, that totaled about 500,000. So that was that second one, where she split the 270 and the 270. And this one is untouched at the moment. And I'm suggesting that, again, a portion of it, slightly more than half of it, be put on hold.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I added to that in the reconciliation.
Right, that's what I thought.
So it's not as much as it was originally, because what she proposed, I added to that. So that's why I'm saying like these, like the, what was the original estimate are not the same anymore, because we've already added to that. So in terms of overall personnel reductions, we're at over 500K total. And then you add what's already on the list. Like we're basically saying hiring freeze, no training, no conferences, nothing. Because all of these numbers added together is basically where you're at. Again, not necessarily trying to sway you, but if your goal was to try to make sure that the city manager had flexibility, and you're agreed with the list of priority positions that she proposed, then this extra 300K is going to, it's going to make it hard for her to do it without coming back to us almost immediately to ask us to free up those funds.
Oh, let's vote on it.
Yeah, and I also just think, I mean, I voted on the reconciliation for the addition that Councilwoman Circe put forward, and given what we did on the reconciliation list a few hours ago, and what the hold is here, I just, like, we've done a lot to our personnel budget this evening, in response to what we're facing with the health crisis. And I do want to keep some flexibility in it, so as we're moving forward, that depending on how things change, and how the city manager may need to reprioritize different positions and other things. And so I appreciate the effort in thinking about what should be on hold, but I, yeah, I think we've done a lot tonight on the personnel stuff. So, does the clerk want to call it?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
No.
Councilmember Kostic?
No.
Councilmember Siemens?
No.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Smith?
Wake him up.
Councilmember Circe?
No.
Mayor Stewart?
No.
All right.
All right. And then I don't think we have to talk about the last one, because we all agreed to put it there, or a majority agreed.
Right.
Yeah.
So then we are done?
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, could I ask one other thing before we go? So just for the resolution that the staff will be preparing, to me, it's important to say no more than three months, and three months, and three months, we'll formally review the hold list. I understand we have the right to do that at any point. I think it would be important to have a clause in the resolution we vote on next week that says, in the fiscal year, no more than every three months, as we go along, we'll review that, take into account the concerns about the COVID and other factors. I don't think we have to vote on that, I just, it's my sense that we would include.
Oh. All right. Thank you all for the work on this. This is, this was a lot, I really appreciate everyone going through everything, all the feedback we received tonight, and over the last few weeks, and a huge thanks to our staff.
Yes.
Thank you so much for all the work you're doing, not just on our budget, but on everything else. So this is a very difficult time, and it's particularly difficult to have such late evenings and to be going through a budget like this. So I appreciate the attention and all the answering of questions and everything. So thank you all, and good night. We're adjourned.
Good night.